Planning Board is now in session. August 10th. We're starting at 7:17 due to some earlier technical difficulties, but I think we're all set now. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 30A 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Southborough's website at www.southboroughtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting or participate in the public hearing may do so in the following manner, which would be www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public is permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access to proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So this afternoon, the town planner and I were on the phone for almost an hour, and we were never disconnected. It was a clear connection. And one of the topics that we went over was the the value of these virtual meetings versus, you know, the regular in-person meetings, or compared to doing nothing until until the order was lifted. So we agreed that it's far from what we have for participation when we're all in the same room. But it's not perfect. None of the meetings are perfect, and we'll just do the best we can. So the first item on the agenda tonight is a discussion item, Master Plan Committee update. Should I go to Mrs. Latrell?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Master Plan Committee last met on July 29th. Our next meeting is August 26th. Our co-chair Judith Watson and Sarah did a fabulous job creating a draft vision, a storyboard that will take us all the way through to completion, and a draft chapter. They did a draft of the housing chapter. So we're going to do a deep dive on those things at our next meeting on August 26th. As always, all our documents and all information is on our Google Drive, the link to which is on our website, on the town website, and we welcome any input or comments. Thank you.
Anything from you, Sarah? All set?
Yeah, it's been a pleasure working with the Master Plan Committee, so I'm excited to continue.
Once again, compliments for your hard work. Okay, next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing. Seven Chestnut Hill Road, major site plan approval. This public hearing is continued from July 13th. I'll ask the town planning to present an update, some new submittals. Karina?
Yes, hi, everybody. Sorry about the confusion there at the beginning. So this is the second public hearing for the major site plan approval application for Seven Chestnut Hill Road, the barn for Chestnut Hill Farm. The last planning board meeting was on July 13th, 2020, to which the public hearing was continued to this evening. In the interim, we received some exhibits, truck turning, information for the access drives, and a limit of disturbance exhibit that the applicant was working out with Fussin O'Neil to determine the threshold for lid requirement. Then on August 3rd, we received a revised submission to the documents, the plans dated August 3rd, 2020, and an updated stormwater management report dated August 3rd, 2020 as well. That information was sent to Fussin O'Neil, our reviewing consultant, to provide review. In addition, it was sent to the town departments for further review and provided to the planning board and posted on the planning board website. We have not received town department comments back. I did get some comments from some residents, and we received the Fussin O'Neil review letter this afternoon, right around 5:00 PM, which we distributed to the planning board and also the applicant team. Sarah, were you able to distribute that to the applicant?
Yes, it was just
Like at 6:30?
No, it was later than that, because I, you know.
We just got it, and then I emailed it to you, right? So, you know, we haven't had a chance to review that, and we haven't had a chance to post that up on the website as well, but we plan to do that tomorrow. So we also have a signed extension request from the applicant, Mr. Bob Murray, from the trustees of the reservations. Should the meeting, public hearing not close this evening, then they would be requesting the planning board extend their action deadline to a public hearing on September 14th, with planning board action on that following Friday, which is September 19th. And a copy of that is posted on the Dropbox. And that brings us to where we are. That's as updated as we are.
So the current deadline for action by the board is August 21st.
Correct.
Which necessitates an extension unless we close the hearing tonight and vote. But since the materials were just, feedback in the materials, some of them were just received today, then a an extension of the approval period is appropriate. And you're saying that that would be to extend the approval period through 19 September?
No, it would be through, that's correct. I just have to make sure you have the proper date for that. It would be the public hearing continued to September 14th.
And then we
And extend the action to September 18th, so 14, 15, 16, 17, 18th is the Friday.
Yep, okay. All right, so who do we call on? We start with Bob?
Are you happy to answer any questions, or I don't know how you want to proceed?
Well, I think maybe this is the version three, I believe, of the, of the plan, or is it, anyways, it's an updated plan two. So can you explain to us in general what has changed?
I believe Bert Corey, our engineer is on. Bert, would you like to talk about the changes to the plan?
Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Great, great. So good evening. As far as the plan changes, the one thing that we really started diving into was the area of disturbance. And we went around the entire site looking at where the limit of work was, also trying to address the comments from Fussin O'Neil. And we essentially updated the plan with that new limit of work. It's also shown on the area of disturbance, and we submitted the, we submitted a CAD file also over to Fussin O'Neil so they could take a look at the CAD file. So that's been updated. The extent of the pavement off of Chestnut Hill Road, as far as the small amount of pavement work going into the parking areas, was, was updated and shown on the plan with a couple of spot shots. Essentially, all we're trying to do is create a burn to, you know, to prevent stormwater from coming off of the roadway and washing across.
Bert, can I interrupt you for a second? Do you have the plans that you can share, the screen?
I can try that.
If not, we'll do that. But if you try first, then you can control the mouse.
Sure.
That way, the public and the planning board members can look at what you're referring to.
Somebody needs to enable me to share my screen.
Sarah's working on that.
Yeah, okay.
You're already
Host disabled.
I think if you promote to a panelist, he'll have the ability to share his screen.
Okay, I just said everybody, the panelists can share. I thought he was
Here we go.
There he is.
I had promoted him to panelist. It was the other setting, who can share their screen. I apologize.
That's okay. It's always nice to be promoted. So let's see, though. Where can I go with this?
So you'll put up the August 3rd plans? We can see your screen now, so just be aware, okay?
Yeah. Decide to see the site plan now?
Yes.
Beautiful. All right, scrolling down through the existing conditions. So here was the overall site. Let me move this off to the side. So you can see that we have the limit of work around the north parking area. We've got the limit of work around the parking lot closest to the barn. We also circled the proposed sewage disposal system coming out into this driveway area. There is a limit of work that's associated with these three parallel parking spaces, but it's not really part of the earth disturbance, because all we're doing is painting some white lines on a, on existing pavement. So that's not included in the area of disturbance. Otherwise, the rest of the limit of work is included on that. Scroll down. So this is the, the parking lot that's closest to the proposed barn. We just accentuated a little bit of the, what's going on with the Chestnut Hill roadway coming into the, into the gravel parking lot. Essentially, like I said, we just want to create some kind of a small burn there just to prevent the stormwater runoff from coming across the parking lot. We also moved, there was a discussion item or something that was listed in the, the review letter, that the sign that was right here, just indicating that this is the handicap aisle space, was right in the middle of the aisle. It happens to be nine and a half feet wide, but we still moved it back. So that sign has been moved back. It's this just the accessible aisle sign. We also added to the, to the plans that came up in discussion at the last hearing was to show which trees were being removed. Let me zoom in a little bit on this. So as part of, they have an existing apple orchid there today. So with the proposed construction of the barn, as well as the soil absorption system, we're proposing to remove seven trees. This is actually, this is the largest of the apples. It's a 20-inch apple, four-inch apple. Let's see, 14, 12, 15, another 12, and then there's another 10-inch, all apple trees. There's some large chestnuts that are along this side. Those are to remain, and they're to essentially be protected. We also added a no parking sign in response to the fire department's review letter. And moving on to the next one, and also on the north parking area, we're really not going to do too much with any of the pavement up in this area. It's really just trying to add additional gravel in this area. You can see the existing edge of gravel doesn't really line up too well with where our proposed parking is. You know, we could try to shift the parking back over to where it was. However, it doesn't give us room for this, this wet swale that we're proposing for stormwater management. So by pulling the driveway off of the wall a little bit, we had to shift the driveway over. Again, just to line up with the dimensional standards. I also added this, this contour here, just so that it's easier understood as far as what's going on with the grading in here. It's just a simple 301 that carries through this parking lot area, and then there's a low spot. So if, in case this, this water quality swale ever overflows, it would pond up as it does today, and then it would continue out into this general direction as it does today. I just wanted to highlight that. And I also increased the size of the sediment form, doubled it in size. I just saw an error in the calculation, so I, I made the adjustment on that. Let's see. Going forward to these, we also added a Chestnut Hill address sign. Essentially, the, the fire department wanted to have some kind of an address sign out in the front. So that, that'll be a sign that says number seven and number nine, Chestnut Hill. And then going on here, there was some indication of some alternate parking that was removed from the plan. Those are essentially the, the changes to the plans.
Very good. Any other information that you wanted to share, or should I open it up to the board and the public?
Well, we also updated as part of the review letter from Fussin O'Neil. I think we, we compiled quite a bit of data, exhibit plans, as well as updating the stormwater report, too. Haven't seen their, their response to our response, but there was quite a bit of information that was forwarded on to everybody.
I just want to point out that first question I had, just primarily because it's a pretty important one, is did you work out the lid threshold with Fussin O'Neil? I'm assuming that the answer is that a lid is not required.
You know, I can't answer that because I haven't seen their response or Amy's response back to our response.
I thought you had communicated with them.
We did. We, we did, yeah, we were communicating in the very beginning. Then I was on vacation, but I tried her a couple of times, did not get her. We did send over the CAD file so that she could go in and verify everything. So I'm, I'd actually just have to read her response back, you know, and what we had sent over. I haven't seen that yet, though, so I can't say anything about it.
Okay, did you get an email this afternoon, this evening with the, with the, with the review comments?
You know, I just, I just checked my email, and I didn't see anything in there.
Okay.
There we go. 7:25.
It just came late. Yeah, we got it late this afternoon, early evening, so we forwarded it out.
We got it after hours.
Okay, so that'll be to be determined. If I can open the comments before the end of the meeting, maybe I can answer that as well. Okay, and then also to point out that I believe you submitted a letter in, from Conservation, indicating that the project was approved by the Conservation Commission, indicating that it falls within compliance of the conservation restriction.
Yes, that's correct.
Wow, okay. There was a question last meeting on that.
Yep.
Karina, did you want to go over the discussion relative to handicap?
Yes. So there are a couple of things I just wanted to bring up before it goes to the board for questions and to the public. Just give me a second here. All right, so we need to, once we look at the updated review comments from Fussin O'Neil, the follow-up review comments, we'll see what they say in regards to the requirement or the need for a special permit for lower impact development. Then, like I just mentioned, the barn is, and the work under this project appears to be compliant with the conservation restriction from Conservation. I believe you have your stormwater management permit back from Conservation on July 9th.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I'm just going through my papers here. Hard not being at a desk. Okay. I received some questions regarding the ADA compliance. And they were from Bonnie Faniff, who's a resident in Southborough. And she is on the ADA committee, but she wasn't speaking to me from the committee. She was speaking to me as a resident, and she was going to come on this evening as well, but I don't know if her information was working. Her computer was down earlier today, so it had nothing to do with this meeting. But she had questions. Will there be use of the town parking area for events used at the barn? And that question is because the conservation restriction indicates that 10 of those spaces in the trailhead parking area explicitly to be used for trailhead parking. And it appears that you may have included those 10 spaces in your parking calculation for the barn. So that was the first question. Question two, wheelchairs, walking aids, or anyone that has difficulty with walking should be provided with an accessible route, surface firm and stable, grassy area closely cut to the ground level. No one can enjoy an event if access becomes slippery or muddy. The access appears to be long, who will maintain it? And is there any consideration on a drop-off area at the front of the building to address the overflow ADA parking needs if needed? So those were the questions. I can forward them to you tomorrow if you don't have them here. We did ask Fussin O'Neil explicitly about the drop-off requirement. They indicated that it appears, and I'll have to review their letter again that they submitted this afternoon, that, you know, you're in compliance and that the requirement is you have to have handicap parking spaces within 200 feet of an accessible access to the building, which it appears you have. So that's the information regarding those questions, Don.
Okay, I'll open it up to the board. Mr. Mills?
Thanks, Don. Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for the overview. I guess in line with the question on the the handicap parking, is it been completely out of the question to put something right next to the barn? Or is it, you know, did it, was it unfeasible to make that happen? I'm curious, because it doesn't look like the parking spot moved at all.
Could I respond to that?
Please.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we've looked at the parking area. We, we have made accommodations, you know, throughout our operations there when people needed a drop-off to come in through the back way. We're a little concerned about, from a safety point of view, mixing public traffic with the vehicle use of the farm areas, so we're trying to separate the back of the operations. And, but we would be more than happy to accommodate any sort of provisions that are necessary. We have the, the two parking areas. Obviously, we want to separate the, the parking paths, so bringing vehicles in closer to the barn itself would be somewhat problematic, you know, as opposed to coming in from the backside. So that, you know, I, is our understanding that, you know, we are compliant with that, and we would be glad to make any individual accommodations as needed.
This is DA Hayden. May I add to that for a moment? So we're, we're currently doing that so that, for example, if someone contacts us and says that they're not comfortable parking in the handicap parking, we make arrangements for them to go through the back. They're greeted by a staff member, and they're personally escorted to wherever it is that they're going on the property. We also have a that I've actually driven several handicapped people from wherever they are on the farm to wherever the destination is that they're looking for. So we're very, very attuned to that, and we do this at all of our properties throughout the trustees. So, you know, if there is something that needs a special accommodation, we're there to do that, and we have already a proven history of doing that.
And I also add, I just have my email here from Fussin O'Neil's response to the question that we asked regarding a drop-off area and the distance of the parking spaces. And Amy Bell, who is an engineer with Fussin O'Neil, who's been reviewing the information, said she did review the ADA parking and added a comment to the follow-up review. Per the Architectural Access Board, accessible spaces must be no more than 200 feet from the building. If this is not feasible, a drop-off area not more than 100 feet from the building must be provided. The applicant has ADA spaces approximately 150 feet from the barn, and that's bird's eye view, bird flavor. If the board agree, we, if the board, we recommend the applicant add an accessible drop-off area near the barn. No parking, just a drop-off area. This way, we can address the applicant's concern about the farm equipment and address the concern of others about the distance from the barn. So that's, must be, you know, mimicked in the follow-up memo that we got, I'm assuming. Just wanted to get that in there.
So Karina, help me, because I haven't been on a, on a plan that we've done just a drop-off area. Is that something we'd want to see on the plan, where that's designated as a possible drop-off area? Or is that we just say, okay, it's in the conditions afterwards?
Well, it does say here, you know, it's not a requirement, it's a recommendation. They're suggesting that if you're because they do have spaces 200 feet from the building. If this is not feasible, a drop-off area not more than 100 feet must be provided. So technically, it doesn't have to be right next to the, you know, the building. That's to be accessible. But they do recommend near the barn. So I'm, I, I think you can do it either way. If, if it's important to the board and they want to see a drop-off area, then perhaps the applicant can find a way to accommodate that, or it be conditioned. Either way, whatever the board feels comfortable.
So I think it would be nice. It sounds like the trustees are going to do that anyhow. It'd be nice if it was on the plan so that everyone could see what was being considered. The only other question I had at this point was the go barn. So I see it's still going to be raised, and the parking piece was removed. So am I correct in the fact that it's going to be raised, it's just going to be returned to field?
That's right. The petition would be filled in and brought out to the existing grade there.
Okay, that's all the questions I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein.
So as I disclosed at the beginning of this hearing, we are members, and we do the pick-up and drop-off for the, or rather, pick-up for the CSA. And as it is now, the parking entrance and egress is kind of awkward, where people are like waiting on the road while people pull out. And, you know, that's with very low And, you know, that's with very low usage. I'm, I'm wondering, you know, with this expanded usage, what measures the proponent has in place to mitigate traffic issues? Which may sound, you know, silly, given we're talking about Chestnut Hill Road, Chestnut Hill Farm. But they, from my perspective, this does present potential traffic issues on that road.
I mean, I, we, at the chairman's recommendations, we are getting a traffic impact sort of report. We have not had the time to turn that around, so that will be available for the next meeting. But we'll look at the impact, you know, that cart and proposed for traffic on the road.
So it looks like there's basically four parking lots, so to speak. And so on the southernmost point, there's an entrance. Would you, would you be setting this up so that would be the entrance to all of the parking? And then the exit is at the northernmost point of the plan?
I, well, I think the, on the busier days, that, that would be as such. But I, I think for sort of a, I guess it depends on the size of the program and the expected capacity. In terms of how we would organize that. Did not envision sort of a, an entrance and an exit. We could certainly look at that, though, as two separate distinct areas.
So are, are the parking lots continuous or are they, are they separated in some fashion?
Well, there's, we're proposing some overflow parking, so beyond the gravel parking lots for some events that we would park in the field between the two. But there's an existing sort of farm road that sort of connects those two lots.
Can everyone see the screen?
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay, so this is the, the smaller of the, the, the two parking lots, the gravel parking lots that are north of the building. It's cars come in, they also go out, the same entrance here. Then the, the northerly parking lot. This is also an in and an out. There's really no linking this parking area to this parking area. For the overflow grass parking, that would be through this entrance and it's also an in and an out.
Okay, I, I, I think it's just fair to voice the concern that, you know, it's all, it's a very narrow road and there, there's going to be potential traffic, in my opinion, based on the current plan. Do you have any, any questions about that or comments?
Well, we can certainly look at, you know, whether circulation would, would help with that. Try to work within the existing footprint as much as we could to minimize sort of site disturbance.
So if we could talk about the photometrics for a second. Actually, on, on this diagram that you have up now on the screen, could you point to exactly where the light, proposed light poles will be?
Can you see my cursor?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, okay, great. Right here and right here. I gotta learn how to shut those, those old text boxes off, they drive me crazy.
Yeah, just do it, if you could do it again, please.
Yeah, right in this, yeah, let me, let me see if I can zoom in a little bit more for you. Right in this area here is one of the light poles and another light pole over here. Then there's some ballers.
Sorry, are there any existing light poles on the site?
There's no existing light poles. We did create a, an existing light fixture plan. I can share that with you too, if you'd like to see where the, where the existing lights are.
Would they be in place or taken down?
There existing light fixtures that are on the buildings themselves?
Oh, okay, okay. So in other words, they will not be, what you're describing, these two light poles will be the sum total of the new photometrics. They're, they're not going to be in addition to existing photometrics and adding to.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay.
There's, there's also some small ballers that come up this walkway too, though, and those are also a part of the photometric plan.
So I'm, I'm looking at the photometric plan. If somebody could just sort of, you know, explain it to me, you know, there's like blue numbers, green numbers. Maybe just take us through the photometrics, if that's okay.
Yeah, I didn't really work on the photometrics, but I'll be glad to take a look at it with you. This is, oh, that's not the one. This is drawing you're looking at?
It is, yes, exactly.
Yeah, so these, these are the two light poles that I was pointing out in that parking area. And then these are the ballers that, that go up that walkway. Now, to zoom in.
How big are those little? What did you call them? Ball, ballards?
Balls, B-O-L-L-A-R-D.
Oh, okay.
Usually, they're like three feet high. You see those out inside, out front of a lot of, you know, commercial buildings, more for pedestrian lighting, so that they can walk into the entrance. So when they do the photometric plans, what they look at, they know what the light fixtures are. They know the light output from the fixtures and they generate, all of these numbers are foot candles. So this is the, this is the light that's being discharged from the actual light fixture. And what we try to do is get it as close to zero at the property line, so there's virtually no light trespass over the property line. So all these numbers that you're seeing here, you know, obviously up close to the light fixture, you'll start to see, what is that, 3.5 or 3.6 foot candles? As you get closer to the property line, now we're back at zeros. I guess the blue ones represent the zeros, the green ones are the point one. Yeah. One foot candles and zero foot candles. You said there was some red numbers too, though.
It looks like that's, yeah, where the existing structure is.
Yeah, that's, that's the actual, that's where it's brightest. This is where the red's going to be, this is where the red's going to be, obviously it's underneath the light pole and underneath the light fixture. As you start to walk, go away from those light fixtures, though, this starts to dim down. And the whole intent is to try to get this down as close to zero as possible at the property line.
So my last question was about the lid. I'm just trying to follow the communication. There was, DGT Associates submitted the waiver request. Fussin O'Neil said, well, you know, it, it applies if it's an acre and you guys said, well, the site's less than an acre on August 3rd. So we, Corina, has, has Fussin O'Neil just not had a chance to respond to this August 3rd letter from DGT?
No, I was just looking through that myself. What happened is, the original question was, Fussin O'Neil had determined slightly more than an acre. DGT had determined that they were just above, under an acre, yep, I'm looking at.
Yeah, we're, we're actually, you have to redoing everything, we're a couple of hundred feet under an acre, so we're, we're just under the acre.
Right, so in the interim between the two meetings, DGT Bert Corey submitted a, a, a plan to me and to Fussin O'Neil with a limit of disturbance and also CAD drawings, so that Fussin O'Neil could look in detail with measurements right in the CAD drawing, along with truck turning radiuses. And as I'm looking at the follow-up letter from Fussin O'Neil, it appears that it's still in there saying about a waiver. At this time, a review of the project to ensure it meets the requirements of the lid regulations, the MASTI, you have not completed. A term in the filing of a lid special permit is required, additional review of the project required. So they didn't review, they, they got this plan and it appears that the engineer, DGT had said in their prior comment letter that they were requesting a waiver if required. So then there was nothing new to respond to. It would be my assumption that therefore a lid is not required. But to me, Bert, it's not clear that you and Fussin O'Neil had corresponded and worked out, you know, to say yes or no. It sounds like you asked, showed that you were asking for a waiver and then Fussin O'Neil would say it's up to the discretion of the board. But we wanted a definitive answer between the two entities, you and Fussin O'Neil, as to does it meet the threshold or not? So I think that's something we still need to clarify before the next meeting.
Did that come back? I, I was looking on my email and I think my, my screen sharing was, was still on. As a matter of fact, I can probably go to that. But it seemed to me that the, the email itself skipped from 14 to 30.
Yeah.
We just opened this up again.
Right, that's what happens when comments are addressed. Only the remaining comments remain on the review letter. So once a comment is addressed, it's taken off the list, right? So you don't have a one or two or a three, or I mean, one or a two, it goes right to three, which means that still has to be addressed. So as you scroll down the review, and I'm sorry if the public doesn't see that, well, you see that there, as you scroll down the letter, you'll see it starts at number three, which means one and two were addressed. All right. And then it skips four and then here's six again. So if you look down.
The only reason why I say that is because on our, our response letter, number 15 was, that was the, that was the potential waiver request.
Yeah.
Discussion with the area of disturbance, but 15 is labeled something differently up here. It's labeled as fire truck exhibit plan, so I'm not sure.
No, 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 those are the documents that Fussin O'Neil receives at the beginning. So they make a list of all the documents received and then they stack their comments. So if you go down, is there a number 15, so stop at number 14?
Yeah, it goes 14 and then to 30.
All right, so just to summarize quickly, on the prior response letter, number 15 was, the applicant has requested a waiver for section 174133, lower impact development, stating the project disturbs less than one acre. Per section, the, any activity that disturbs less than an acre is exempt from the filing of a lid special permit. When scaled from the site plans, the project appears to disturb approximately 47,700 square feet, which exceeds one acre threshold for filing the lid. The applicant should clarify disturbance and work with the planning board to determine if a lid is required and if a waiver is needed. You responded, area of disturbance exhibit plan is included with this letter. The total proposed area of disturbance on the site is 43,528 square feet, less than one acre threshold. A waiver request has been submitted. So if you're under the threshold, you don't need to request a waiver. It means that you, you don't trigger it. So in the follow-up letter, you know, this, the, the paragraph you see that remains is explanation from Fussin O'Neil saying that it's not specifically addressing that. It, it appears that they're accepted that comment that you, with the additional plan that you showed with the level of disturbance in the auto CAD plan, it appears they're in agreement with you. But they're indicating that they did not review the stormwater requirements of lid regulations in MASTI Stormbook. So if you were, had required a lid, they would more intensely review the stormwater management report in accordance with stormwater management handbook. But because a lid is not required, they don't do that level of stormwater review. They review it more based on, you know, what you've changed. So we'll confirm this, but it's my understanding, Jesse, that it appears a lid is not required. It appears that Fussin O'Neil has an agreement with it, but if the planning board is not, they would leave it up to the discretion of the planning board to provide, grant a waiver. Because with the package was also submitted a, a list of waiver requests. And in that, DGT included a waiver for low-impact development, which would lead to confusion. Because if you don't need a, the permit, you don't need a waiver because you're exempt from it. So it really should be documented clearly. We'll request Fussin O'Neil to clarify that if they do not meet the threshold. And then, Bert, you'll remove the waiver request for the low-impact development.
Will do.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. We, we ended up, I think it was early, early on in our discussions, that until it could actually be deemed as less than an acre, we needed to supply you with a, a waiver request, just in case. And, and so now, I mean, let's just, we'll just make sure we get the confirmation from, from Fussin O'Neil and then we'll just remove that waiver request.
Right, because I think that's what's happening, but it should really be documented solidly. And that's what we were hoping would happen over the past couple of weeks. But you were out on vacation and we're still in state of emergency, so we're, we're getting there.
Yeah, right, no, I understand, yep. We also shared the CAD file too, we wanted to be, you know, here's everything that we've got.
Mr. Stein, did you get your answer?
Yep, yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Was there anything else, Mr. Stein?
Not at this time, thank you.
This is Latrell.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of things. So there's still some notes on the plans that say that they're conceptual, that the proposed building configuration is conceptual and the lighting plan is conceptual.
Yeah, the building would say that it's conceptual because as a, that's a typical civil engineering though, because we're not supplying with the, the architectural plans. You know, usually at this stage, when we're at site plan, we have a building footprint. And then ultimately, you know, that gets developed into a, into a set of construction documents where they're actually dimensioned foundation walls. In this particular case, I don't have a problem removing that, that note also. We did remove the other one too, which I think you had called out before, which was the plan intent. And we took that off, but.
Yeah, thank you, I noticed that.
Yeah, there's another note that you want us to remove with, with God's to, you know, we have, we have an actual photometric plan too. So, you know, I can remove those notes, I feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, so there's also that conceptual disclaimer on photometrics. So that should be.
Is that a particular, can you tell me what the particular note number is?
So on the, the general plans, on the first page, it's number seven, under panel of notes.
Okay.
And then on the photometric plan, there's just a disclaimer on there.
Oh, on the photometric plan itself?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. We can let the, the consultant know who did the photometric plans to remove that.
Yeah, because I want to be pretty sure that the fixtures called out is what we're getting and the numbers and the Kelvins and.
Yeah.
And then I have some other writing questions. Is the fixture bayed for, is that what's going to be in the parking lot?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's going to be like hanging straight down off a pole, is that how that works?
There'll be a metal bracket off a wooden pole that it would hang down from.
Okay. And how many Kelvin is that? And how many Kelvin is that?
2,700. So it's a warm light.
Good. And the same with the ballards?
That's correct, they're both, they're all 2,700 Kelvin.
Okay. And these lights will only be used when there's an event?
That's correct.
So they'll be usually turned off and then after the event, they'll be turned off again?
That's correct.
That's all I have right now, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Holahan.
Thanks. I would say my fellow planning board members covered most of the topics that I had. I just wanted to thank you for pointing out the apple tree removal, very clear and helpful, and the photometric plan and lighting. So thank you for illuminating the space that is intended to be lit and not the environment. So it looked good for me. That's all I had.
Thank you, I just had a, I wanted to go back to the traffic flow and the parking. My travels take me to occasionally to, I think it's Shellburn Farm. It's in Stowe, Hudson. It's on a back road. It's very similar to what we have here. Is anybody familiar with that?
Yes, yes.
And it's an old farm. It has stone walls with openings. And when there is apple picking or, you know, just September, October weekend traffic or even weekday traffic, it's similar to what Mr. Stein was concerned with, which is, you know, cars are out on the street, they're backed up. Some of them, cars are trying to get out while others are trying to get in through the same opening. But that's been there for a long time and it seems, and that road is, it's actually on the way to Stowe Acres Country Club. So it's kind of a much busier road than Chestnut Hill Road. And it seems to me that what you have there, we should, we should be okay with it. And then if it develops into a problem, there's other ways to address it, either through your actions on your property or through the town in limiting vehicles. I know there was some discussion about making it a dead end and only pedestrian traffic would go beyond the farm down to Dairy Farm Road. So I think what you have there, for the most part, similar to the lighting, when there's an event, it's going to be busy, it's going to be bright. But most of the time, it's not and it'll work and will retain that farm atmosphere and the farm streetscape. So opening up to the public, any questions or comments?
I do not see, oh, let's see, we have one hand raised. It's Freddie, I'm going to allow her to talk. Freddie, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Hi, I'm Freddie Gillespie and I'm commenting as an individual because the Open Space Preservation Commission has not had this on their agenda yet. And I just had a couple of questions at this time. One, going back to a question that Bonnie Faniff asked that was addressed here, I didn't really hear the answer. Are the parking spaces at the trailhead designated for the citizens of Southborough trailhead parking and not to be used as part of any requirement for the farm expanded activities with this new barn?
That was something that we spoke with Karina about today. We were looking at the language in the conservation restriction and trying to get a better understanding of that. So the way it currently is included in the overall calculations, so we could look at perhaps making some adjustments on that.
Okay, and I don't know the exact language. I'll be looking at it after this meeting, but I would suggest that we were very involved in the development of the CR and advocating for the protection of this land, the Open Space Preservation Commission. And that was really a promise made to the citizens who spent, you know, a lot of money to purchase the CR. And I would suggest, even if it's not legally required, that you do your utmost to preserve those spaces as intended in all conversations during that process to protect the land, that those property be, those parking spaces be designated for the townspeople and the general public as we had promised people when they were voting to preserve this with their tax dollars.
Yep.
Okay, so my next question is, I understand there's a waiver for landscaping and again, I haven't had a, I apologize, I haven't had a chance to look at it all, but you talked about seven apple trees being removed and an acre of land being just, or just under being disturbed. And even if not required, it seems there could be opportunity to do some native plant replacement in those areas, particularly you mentioned a berm, is that a natural berm?
No, the berm, the berm is at the roadway. Just as we, just as anyone drives off of Chestnut Hill Road and tries to turn into that parking area, it transitions immediately to a gravel area and it heads down gradient into the parking, the parking area. Alls we want to do is create a small berm and we're not talking about a lot of, this berm is an inch or two, that's it. It's not, it's not like you're driving over a curb. It's just something that you typically will see out in the roadways, even at driveway aprons where the roadway water is kept within the roadway with the use of these small berms, something that you don't even really notice as you drive over.
Okay, sorry, I was thinking it was next to the road adjacent to the parking area, so my mistake. But additionally, wherever there's soil disturbed around the barn, around the parking areas, the Open Space Preservation Commission is working with Professor Robert G. Geer and with, and because of the coronavirus, there's been some delay in all of our activities, but we've been in touch with the trustees, Julie Richburg, on having a native pollinator bumblebee survey and to try to help increase the productivity of native bees pollinating your crops. So we thought this could be an opportunity to have a conversation about adding some plants in when you're going to be disturbing the soil anyway. There's some native ground covers that could be used. I'm not sure, again, I haven't looked at the landscaping plan, but, and particularly if you're removing trees, you know, there could be opportunity for some other vegetation, like I know there are apple trees, but like some shrubs or something around the foundation of the building? And is that a conversation we can have?
I mean, I think we're open to sort of suggestions. I think we feel that the farm site has a lot of cultivated spaces there and a lot of it, you know, is really about the views across the open space, the pastoral setting. But we're obviously, would be open to thoughts or suggestions on how to soften the buildings present on site.
I would like to add too that there's a replacement or a, not a replacement, but a new septic system that's going in in an existing grass area. You know, once that goes into the ground and essentially we just want grass cover on that, not really a great idea to plant anything that has any type of, you know, roots that are going to find their way down into the septic system. So we'd want to leave that as a grass area, certainly around the perimeter. I mean, I think trustees could work with whoever. As far as the tree removal, I think four of the seven are right in the footprint of or very close to the footprint of the proposed barn. The other three are around the periphery of the barn. And I think, you know, it's also to have some type of pedestrian access and, you know, as part of the festivities that go on with using the barn is also a patio that's kind of associated with that barn too. So, you know, it'd have to be carefully planned out. The rest of the disturbance is really associated with, you know, existing gravel parking areas adjacent to grass areas.
Okay, so you're saying that on top of the septic, it's grass is not native, wildflowers would be acceptable there? Shallow rooted?
I don't think we're in a position to say exactly what is going to go, you know, whether we can put wildflowers or anything there yet because we have to really discuss that as an organization. We do have a commitment to using natives. I know you've, if you've spoken with Julie, you know, she is very aware of all of those things. So as an organization, we're very sensitive to that, but I would be hesitant to commit at this point in time to exactly what planting is going to go over a septic area until that was very carefully examined.
Right, maybe because it's not a lid or stormwater, these are usually conversations we have at the planning board and particularly where there's trees coming out. But I'll take a look at the plans and write a letter and have my Open Space Commission discuss it at a meeting before your next meeting. I just was raising the issue before your next hearing, so you'd know that something we're probably going to be asking for.
Thank you, anyone else from the public, town officials?
I don't see any additional hands up in attendees at the moment.
Let's go back to the lid. I think we stated at the last meeting that this is a unique, relatively unique site in that it's a, it's a big farm and there's no other real buildings or neighbors nearby. So what I would suggest is that regardless of whether the lid, a lid waiver is required because you're saying that you're under an acre, that the board would say, it's so close to an acre that the board would waive the requirement for a lid up to two acres or an acre and a half, so that you don't have to be so surgical in trying to stay under the acre. It'd have a little bit of movement to disturb more area and make the plan better. And the board, I would recommend to the board that up to an acre and a half or two acres, as long as you stay under that, the lid is waived. Just a thought. Anyone else? So Karina, we have the.
Can I just ask a question? That would be relative to this particular permit and project, right? So in the future, if another project came, that would be an independent project. So it wouldn't really impact future projects, it's just for this project.
Absolutely.
Right.
Any new, any project beyond this would stand on its own merits.
Right.
Would be looked at in that, in, under its own proposed action.
Right.
So if there's nothing else, then the, it's appropriate to entertain a motion to grant the proponent's request for a extension of the approval period to September 14.
Hey, Don, Mr. Mills had asked if I could make the motions.
Mr. Stein.
Karina, so is it, are we also extending the action deadline to September 18th? Would that be in a separate motion or in the same motion?
Well, no, it's this, what you'll do is extension, I'm not sure if you do your continuation request, I mean, your vote to continue the public hearing and then the extension?
We can't continue the hearing to a date beyond the current date. So you have to, you have to extend the date first and then you're allowed to continue the hearing within that timeframe. So the motion could be the same, Jesse, it could be that the planning board grant the request for an extension of the, of the approval period to September 18th and continue the public hearing to September 14.
I'd like to make a motion that the planning board extend the approval period for seven Chestnut Hill Farm Road to September 18th and the public hearing to September 14.
At 7:05?
7:05 PM.
Motion's been made in second at any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yep. Stein, yes?
Latrell, yeah.
Lehan, yes.
Very good, we'll see you on September 14th.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, next item on the agenda is a discussion item, which is five Breakneck Hill Road, single family to two-family conversion. Lacks a town planner to give us the details on this discussion?
Okay.
And the requirement relative to ZBA.
Yes. Okay, this item is for five Breakneck Hill Road. We received a request from Mr. Jack Bartolini with Trolley Tracks Inc., John Bartolini, Jr., requesting the planning board to provide a report to the zoning board of appeals for a conversion of a one-family house to a two-family. And that is in regards to special permit section 174-9G. So the applicant provided exactly what he provided to the zoning board of appeals, which was the application for this special permit for two-family conversion, a denial letter from, or a letter from the building inspector saying that he needs to come to the planning board for a report to the zoning board, very similar to when you have an accessory apartment in that kind where the planning board has to provide a report with additional information, a plot plan, copy of the butters list, and also first and second floor plans of the 174-9 indicates that, and then I just lost my motion. Oh, here it is. That the planning board would approve and report to the ZBA on the two-family conversion, which would meet the requirements of 174-9G for the dwelling at five Breakneck Hill Road located in a residential zone on approximately 3.056 acre lot. Building currently blends into the character of the surrounding neighborhood. No alterations to the exterior of the building are proposed except to repair existing materials. The adequacy of the ingress and egress would have been met and all street parking will be permitted in a manner consistent with the character of the premises. So depending on how the planning board feels, that would be the motion. And then we would provide a report to the zoning board of appeals with any conditions, after which the zoning board of appeals could make their decision. And if they are not in agreement with the conditions, they would state that. That's what I have done.
Okay, good. So when Karina and I went over this this afternoon, we, we wanted to have a draft motion prepared so that we would make it easy for the board to understand what our report to the ZBA. ZBA would be. So I'll open up to the board. Any questions or comments, Mr. Mills?
I have no questions or comments.
Mr. Stein?
So just if somebody, are we not going to have a presentation on the project itself and why it's being done and stuff like that?
I just gave an introduction a little bit. Jack Bartolini is on the panel.
Do you want to speak, Jack?
Well, I can. Actually, Karina stole my thunder, but essentially, that's, that's what we got going for us. I mean, she said everything I said. The building's been existing since 1996 and does meet all the requirements. I don't know what else I can tell you about it that she hasn't already come up with. It's very close to Route 9, but it is a fairly large parcel, the first driveway off of Breakneck Hill Road.
So are you going to retain ownership or?
Yeah, yes, I will.
And ostensibly use it for residential purposes, Jack?
Yes.
Are you going to be adding any driveway?
Not going to be adding, I'm not going to be adding anything, Jesse. It's, I don't have to at this point. It's, it's got everything it needs. It's got plenty of parking. It's got a cul-de-sac to turn around in, and it's, I'm not within 200 feet of any of the neighbors. Actually, I think I'm over 200 feet, but...
So you're really just making, so, so, Jack, you're just really making structural changes, it sounds like, to meet the building code for two units?
Yeah, I actually, I don't even think I'll have to make, I don't even think I'll have to make much of that, do much with that either.
But Jeff, like, would you be adding a kitchen?
Well, I'll add kitchens, bathrooms, things of that nature, yes. I'll add, you know, but other than that, no.
Okay, I mean, as long, I guess as long as, this seems like more of a building inspector thing to me, where there'd be questions.
Well, she's, she's written a letter, and, I mean, she's gone over it and passed it on to the ZBA, but, you know, I don't know, Jesse, I've done this before on Flag Road. It's kind of a, I think it's kind of a nice section of our bylaw. Not very many people use it, but I've used it before, and it's worked out well for me. That's to work out for the town itself, too.
I have no questions.
Mrs. Latrell?
As Karina said, this is a section of the bylaw 174-9G, which allows for the conversion of a one-family house, which has been in existence for two years or more. And a one-family house is defined as a detached dwelling intended and designed to be occupied by a single family. But this has never been a single family. It's been a daycare center for 22 years. I guess the original building permit was for a single family, but on May 31st, 1996, it was still the building permit was framed to a daycare. So I don't know how a dwelling that doesn't have any bedrooms, has four half baths, but no ability to bathe, could be considered a single family home. And I think this is a good section of the bylaw, too, and I've been in support of other conversions. The problem is how many other businesses will want to be converted to family homes. There are other buildings that kind of look like two-family homes, but are, I mean, look like single-family homes, but are businesses, like Shrubs and Trees or Tempting Interiors, Merle Norman, McCarthy School. I think the planning board's empowered by the zoning code and this, not meet the zoning code.
Well, I think, can I answer that, Mimi? Can you hear me? Because I'm having a hard time hearing you guys.
Mimi's connection is a little bit slow.
Are we all there? The building inspector went over this in great detail, and what happens here is that a daycare is an allowable use in residential area within the town itself, though, and it's also an in-house use, and it also falls under the Dover Act. So the fact that it was an allowable use, as a matter of fact, Mimi, you might have had one right next door to you at one time. I think it got torn down, but they are scattered throughout the town. So when she reviewed this, she felt that since it was a, a residential use, that it would fall under the category. What I did was originally, I put in, you're right, I put in for a, you know, I think it's in your packets, I put in for a, a single-family home, and then I was approached by Dolores Edrens to make it into a daycare. We amended the permit, and then were allowed to go forward with very little adjustment from a single family to a two-family as far as permitting process. And what's happened now is that Dolores was was thinking of cutting back, but now with this COVID virus, she's not going to move forward with this building at all. And so the building inspector thought that it met the, the criteria. So rather than put another business in there, this is what I was going to do, and I don't know if I could even put another business in there, but if you're telling me I can, I think that might be something different, but that's, when I went to see the building inspector, this is what they came up with, and that's the letter they sent me. So I hope that explains it, but it was, it falls under a residential use.
Well, the bylaw is very specific that it allows for a conversion of a one-family house to a two-family dwelling, not anything that's allowed in res A to a two-family.
Yeah, but it was also specific in saying that I could amend a one-family into a daycare, too. So it works both ways.
But, but a daycare isn't a, isn't a dwelling, isn't a single-family dwelling. Nobody's living there without bedrooms or the ability to bathe. And unfortunately, I did reach out to the building commissioner and asked her to clarify her opinion and received an email back from the principal from the zoning board of appeals saying she advised Lori not to answer my question because it would be a violation of the meeting, which was...
That I don't know.
Very curious. So I don't, I don't think it needs to require...
Anything else, Mimi?
Nope.
Mrs. Holian?
Mrs. Latrell raised the same issue that I had wanted to ask about, and it's just a concern that if the language is very specific to a single-family dwelling, do we establish a precedent by allowing this to happen when the daycare is not actually a single-family dwelling? So I just, I'm a little worried that if you did accept this under the 174-9, that it's not necessarily to the letter of the law.
Can I just point out one def, I just want to clarify for the board members as part of my job. Under the definition of one-family house, I want to be very specific that we read the definition exactly so that the planning board hears the exact thing. So under 174-2, the definition is one-family house, a detached dwelling intended and designed to be occupied by a single family. So a detached dwelling intended and designed to be occupied by a single family.
Correct. Karina, I did read that, and I, the question is, how can it be occupied by a single family if there are no bedrooms, no ability to bathe?
Okay, I just wanted to make that definition clear.
Does it go back to the original building permit application, which was for a single-family home? Is that right, Jack?
Oh, yeah.
The original building permit application was for a single-family home? You there, Jack?
Yes, yes, it was.
And I think that's, I think that is what the building inspector is, is basing her opinion on. It was originally intended for a single-family home. The building permit was granted, and then it was modified. So I guess in accordance with, or her interpretation of that, is within the definition of a, of a single-family home.
Could I just ask? It doesn't, when, when the septic was designed, the septic was applicable to the single family, then the use, it could also do the use of the daycare. Is that what I understand, Jack?
What happened was it was, it was put in as a single family, then it was amended. I don't have all my notes because it was 24 years ago, but the requirement at the time, Bob Garfield was the, the building inspector, and I believe I talked to Wayne Tees, who was the planner, and it was all, that it was a residential use, and that it was put in as a, a single-family building at that time. I guess my question would be more like this, I mean, if I went down there tomorrow and to put two bedrooms in there and then came back, I mean, is that, that satisfying the letter of the law of what you want? I mean, to me, that, that really doesn't, I mean, the spirit of the law was residential, and, and daycares are allowed in RA, RB, RC, industrial, they're allowed everywhere. They're allowed under the Dover Act, they're allowed in Arizona, they're allowed as an in-house use.
So could you go back over the definition that had the reference to the two years?
Are you asking me, Don?
Yes.
The two-family dwelling, the conversion of a one-family house, which has been in existence for two years or longer, to a two-family dwelling, is allowed by special permit from the Board of Appeals.
So is that referring to the structure as a, in existence for two years, or a structure that has been a single-family home for two years?
Well, the conversion of a one-family house, which has been in existence of two years, if you replace one-family house would be the definition, the conversion of a detached dwelling intended and designated to be occupied by a single-family house, which has been in existence for two years or longer. So I believe the, when I spoke with the building commissioner, she indicated that they were the opinion that it was designed for a single-family house. It looks like a single-family house from the outside. They're not going to be changing the outside, and that...
And the structures, the house has been in existence for two years.
The house itself has been in existence, and my point was that the septic was installed as it was going to be a single-family house, and then it was determined, I believe according to the notes, it was determined that that septic system would be valid for that change to the daycare at that time. So it was built as a single family, but they had to prove that a daycare could fit into that house.
So, Jack, so going back to what you proposed or mentioned, which was if you went in there and revised the interior such that a, it would be fully functional as a single-family home, and then you came back to the board and said, okay, now I want to make it a two-family?
Right. I mean, I don't see the difference in that. I mean, the building has been up for 24 years. I'm not going to change anything in the outside. Quite frankly, it's going to be less intrusive on the neighbors, but I'm with it, I'm, the neighbors can't even see me. I don't know, what Mimi's kind of saying is that I have a, a business there, and therefore it's a business zoned, is that right?
No. I'm, I'm saying that the requirement is that to convert to a two-family, the existing building must have been a single-family dwelling for two years prior to your conversion. And in, I think it's a great place for a two-family, everything you said is true, except for how many other buildings on, say, Route 9, because this says, the special permit says nothing about a residential zone, were originally single-family homes. What about Red Barn, I think that was at one time, and Tempting Interiors? And so I think it's a slippery slope that we're going to be converting our very limited business district into residences, potentially, if we allow that.
So it seems that we either agree with the building inspector and send a report to the ZBA saying that it's essentially okay, or we don't agree with the building inspector and send a report saying that it does not, this building does not meet the requirement for conversion. Is that, is that what we're talking about here?
Yes, I believe so.
I think so.
So, Jack, do you, do you want us to entertain a motion to either, entertain a motion to agree with the building inspector interpretation and see, see where that goes as far as the board voting?
Well, I, I don't, at this point here, I would like a favorable one. I don't know if, I mean, I, I don't know if I have three members against two or if I have everybody against me. I, it's kind of a shame, at this point here, I mean, eventually the building will be empty, and I don't know what I will do with it.
Well, you must also understand that the requirement is for the board to send a, a letter to the ZBA.
Right, but then the ZBA would decide.
And then the ZBA can, you know, agree with it, have it somehow influence what they do, or just throw it out the window.
Right.
So the action of this board is, is really a recommendation.
Well, you know as well as I do, it's always nice to have the planning board say yes before you go into the ZBA, so, but I, I do need, I guess, for you guys to make a decision one way or another, I guess, unless you don't want to make any decision at all, which you don't have to either. You can choose not to make a decision.
I'll leave it up to the board. Does anybody want to make a motion as read by the draft by the town planner?
Hey, Mr. Bartolini, is there an opportunity here to deed one of these units affordable? Would you be open to that?
No. Are you suggesting I do a 40B there? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, sir. I am a planning board representative to the South Borough Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee, and the purview is to see where there's, you know, willing landlords and...
Jesse, I... I was willing to do that on the Fable Hall and I got it shoved to me, so. I'm not as willing as I used to be. Thank you, but no.
It was good of Mr. Stein to ask the question, but we might, let's make sure. We have to make sure we stay within the discussion item, which is the conversion of. Single family to a two-family. Anybody want to make a motion? Karina, do you want to reread the, the motion?
Yes, the motion, the draft motion reads for Five Breakneck Hill Road. I move the planning board approve and report to the ZBA on the two-family conversion, which meets the requirements in zoning by Law 174.9G. For the dwelling at Five Breakneck Hill Road, located in residential A-zone on a 3.056 acre lot. The building currently blends into the character of the surrounding neighborhood, no alterations to the exterior of the building are proposed. Except to repair existing materials, adequacy of ingress and egress have been met, off-street parking will be permitted in a manner. Consistent with the character of the premises.
Mr. Mills made the motion, I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Go ahead, Andrew.
I was just saying, I was, I'm moving it because I am in favor of it due to the original intent of the property and that it got converted to. A daycare after the original application, so. I, I see Mimi's point about possibly, you know. Having other businesses look to do the same thing, but I think this is different because the original application was for a single unit. Or a single dwelling, so.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discuss, any more discussion, questions?
Yeah, I just have a question, so to Andrew's point, if that's the case in the original, that it was approved for a single-family dwelling. I would go back to kind of the question Mimi asked about Red Barn or the, the, the other places that are located on Route nine that are homes. That have been turned into businesses and understanding if those were originally permitted as homes.
I think the answer to that is no, because they were constructed before you had to get a building permit. It was, those were, those are old buildings, there was no zoning at the time, you could just. You could just build a house. So, this is a. Mrs. Luttrell is, is, is right that if. A, 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 a single-family home was built. After 1955, when the zoning came in and app, applications for, I'm not sure if applications for, building applications. Predate that, but some of these buildings that were old homes 100, 150 years ago. They never had any permit applications, so. It, it's not a complete precedent. For those homes. Prior to applications.
Is there language we could write in this letter that we could add, so I know it says granting the special permit and any restrictions that should be imposed. As conditions thereof, can we just make a statement that kind of it's, it's being done because it was originally permitted as a single-family home? And, and I, I, just in that language, so that it kind of captured that way in document form?
Well, um, yeah, but. Uh, the, the motion, does the motion refer at all to the building inspector's letter? Because that's where it's captured.
It does not, but it could. Have a condition that references the letter, so. If the decision of the Board of Appeals differs from the recommendations of the planning board, the reason therefore shall be stated in the decision. You could. I suppose you could condition a couple, you know, a line here referencing the. Or specifically saying. Either, I would think either option works.
The zoning code is silent on whether what. It requires that it's a single-family dwelling two years prior.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is it going to be amended to include some reference to the building inspector's letter or? The original application as a single-family home? I suggest that when we send the report, we refer to. The building inspector's letter.
Would that be the building inspector's letter to Jack Bartolini included with this application? Special permit application five Breakneck Hill Road proposed to family, what I called the denial letter, which prompted him to get a report.
Yeah, but it's.
That's the letter you're talking about, I'm just making sure.
There's no other letter, is there?
No. Okay.
Sadly, it's not dated.
Well, it refers to his application, which is dated. So it's somewhere between the time he made the application and today. All in favor of the motion as amended, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Luttrell, no. Kulahean, yes.
Very good. That'll be sent off to the ZBA and wish you luck, Jack.
All right, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda. Is 96 Mount Vickery Road Flexible Development. It's a discussion item. As the town planner to. Cover this at least.
Okay, this is, um. I'll make this a little quicker. So we received a request from Michael Bartolini with Bartolini Properties regarding a request to. Come before the planning board to introduce a upcoming project for a flexible development. At 96 Mount Vickery Road. The information included a conventional six-lot layout for single-family homes. And then it also included. A site layout of. Still six single-family homes. In a more flexible development layout. I believe Mike Bartolini is here and he's been upgraded to a panelist and he's going to present his project. Mike, you have to unmute. Sarah, can you unmute Mike, here he is, okay.
Mike, you also?
Yeah, I don't, I got kicked out for some reason.
You're off it now.
All right, um, I can't see you at all, so, um, I don't know exactly how this is going to work. But anyways, it's, uh, 96 Mount Vickery Road, I am here with my brother Tony and my brother Greg. There we go. And, uh, we are here to present and see if we can get some information based upon. The conventional subdivision and a flex subdivision. Karina, do I have the ability to share?
You do, so at the bottom of the screen, there's a little green icon that says share screen.
Okay.
Select that, then you can open your file, but when you open that, it's going to show what's on your screen.
Sure.
You know.
Just to give you some history, this is the. Lamson Property. It's historically been. A. A logging facility. Um, and I just wanted to show you some pictures of what it's been. For like the last 20 or 30 years. So. This is, uh. Can you see that? Uh, so this is what currently was there, it's been a logging facility for quite some time. They have been logging there for pretty much eight hours a day. For an extensive period of time, so what we were looking to do is bring into that, um, the subdivision. And see if we could make it a little more helpful to the neighbors. So. What you have here is the conventional layout. It's about 557 feet of pavement, it does prove out six legal lots. And we were trying to go with the. The flexible development here. We believe the flexible development gives a lot of benefit to the neighborhood and to the town, it's a shorter road. We go from about 557 feet of pavement to about 428 feet of pavement. There's a lot more open space. It's less intrusive on the neighbors. It's just a lot less sprawl, we were trying kind of to give it more of a feel like what we did on Leeds Way. Where the houses are tighter together. Leeds Way has a little more advantage because it was a private road, so you had more flexibility. But we feel like this will do or mimic something of the same type of project. So. That's really it. And we do think it does add a lot of benefit to the neighborhood.
Mike, can you just explain a little bit briefly what the hatched area is in the, on your flexible layout?
This area here?
Yeah.
So that is the open space area, so you have the, this is in the flex area, this is the road here. You have the six smaller lots. You have an easement for drainage to the back here. Um, and then that shaded boxed-out area would be the open space areas.
And what is the area in the back of Lot three?
The back of Lot three?
That's not hatched, it's open.
So that would be a wetland area.
That is wetland.
Would, yeah, we would have to go to conservation through this.
Okay. Is there anything else? Oh, there's done, okay.
Karina, did you ask about the North Arrow?
Oh, yes.
The orientation of the two plans?
Mike, it's always confusing when there's a conventional with the North Arrow pointed north. And then, you know, you have the same parcel at a different scale with a different north orientation. Was there a reason for that?
I did not notice it, um.
It makes it difficult to compare.
I don't think they're actually different, I think the, so if you look at the way the orientation of this plan is versus. This plan, I think they're actually pointing the same way.
No, look at the North Arrow, see the North Arrow in the top left corner, it's pointing up, right?
The North Arrow's going this way, but the road's here, so if you look at the, the orientation of the. Sorry, I'm having an issue.
If you go to the flexible layout?
Yeah.
It's the same, it's the same layout, it's just, and, and it's the same view, but you rotated. You know, the whole drawing 45 degrees or 90 degrees to the right, so it makes it hard to see.
Right.
So.
Scale is different also.
And the scale is different.
I think the North still. Here, I can rotate, hold on one sec.
Yeah. All I'm saying is that between the two plans, it really helps if you can compare apples to apples, same scale and. Say Mount Vickery would run across, or Middle Road is across the top, you know what I mean? Because you, you know, if you're looking at it quickly, you're like, hmm, you know, you have to kind of rotate them, especially when you're dealing with PDFs.
Gotcha.
Just makes it more difficult to, to see, you know, compare the two layouts. If they're both oriented the same, you can say, oh, look, Lot one changes, Lot one is a little bit smaller and the flex, the frontage is a little less. You know.
Okay, um, I mean, I believe the North Arrow is the same, I just, is the orientation of the plan, so I mean.
Oh, I'm not saying the North Arrow is different, I'm saying. You just didn't rotate it the same.
Correct.
Okay. Beat that dead horse.
But yeah, I, like I said, I, I, we think that the shrinking the property, adding the more open space. We think it does add a great benefit to the neighborhood and the surrounding neighbors.
Do you know what percentage open space that is?
I believe in the, um, conventional is 10% and I believe the. The flex is 25%.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll open it up to the board. Mr. Mills?
Yeah, um, I had a question, the, the abutters to the proposed. New six houses or properties. Are they, are there already homes abutting all those lots?
There is. Some houses here, here, there is a house here, I mean, those homes. Like I showed you before. They have been up against a logging facility for the past 20, 30 years. So they do have. But they do have. So like, I think in the back here. So one of the neighbors is right there. And he's been staring at logs and chainsaws forever, so. Yeah, there are homes surrounding it, I believe there's a home over here, uh, off to the left of this pile. There is a intermittent brook in the back here, once you cross that intermittent brook, there is some homes on Hidden Meadow. Um, and then further off in the distance, you can kind of see some houses on Middle. Is an existing house.
Planning board, so I can't really chat, but no water today, I have to go over to.
Freddie, we can hear you.
So Mike, let me just jump to the, the root of my question, I think it was Leeds Way we talked about, because. One of the properties abutted on the other side to, or exposed itself to another road and we said, okay, well. We approved it, but said you can't subdivide that lot, or someone couldn't come and build a property on the other, or build another house on the other side. Try to subdivide the, the lot.
Correct.
So I guess the, I know this is just a discussion, the one thing I would look to see. If we were to move forward with this flexible option would be the same type of thing, that the lots would not be subdivided any further. If, you know, we went through with this, but. No one else could say, I think it's Lot three, I know you said it's Wetlands way back there, but. We keep it all. Always with that one building.
I think it would be okay with us, to be honest with you, Andrew, that's, I'm pretty sure that entire area for the most part is wet.
Okay.
So I don't.
You see what I'm? You see what I'm saying?
Yep. But I, I don't think it would be possible to subdivide it further than this.
Yeah, Mike, it would be easier to see where the wetlands were on either plan if they were in the same location, that's my point, it's a good example. You, you know, it's hard to say, okay, where's the wetlands, and you, you show the wetlands on the conventional. But with the change in scale and rotation, it's tough to see the wetlands. Where they are compared to Mount Vickery.
So I have one other question, the open space, would the intent be that that's just for the residents? Or the public could use that, does it, is it possible to connect that to any trails?
I do not believe there's any access to any sort of trails there, it's used a lot for a buffer, more so than anything. Is, I do believe, uh, most of it is common open space, but it's. I, I, there, I don't believe there are any trails within that vicinity.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Stein.
Mike, have you reached out to any of the abutters and talk to them about what you intend to do?
We haven't reached out to anyone yet, we wanted to go through this meeting at first. Like I said, this is for informational purposes, to see where the board's head was at before we. Move forward with anything. I mean, I can't speak for the neighbors, that being said, if I. Again, had to live next to the logging facility, I would probably prefer this, but. It is something that we would probably do. Going forward.
Would you be willing to work with the Open Space Commission on a conservation restriction on the open space?
I believe ten percent of it is already required to be undisturbed, so. I mean.
Well, with your, with your flex, what is the percentage?
The flex is twenty-five percent.
Okay. That's all the questions I have at the moment. Mrs. Luttrell.
Did we lose Mimi?
I'd have fallen off.
It does look like we may have lost Mimi. I don't see her in the panelists at the moment.
Let's go to. Is she back?
Her video's coming on, yeah.
I'm back.
There she is. I can go if we.
Yeah, go ahead, Marty.
Yeah, so Michael and team, nice to meet you. I wanted to ask, so as I looked at 174-132. There are very clearly stated objectives for flexible development. And I heard you talk about less sprawl, but there are nine clear objectives, and I'd love for you to just kind of talk through those. I can, I can actually share my screen if you stop sharing.
Yeah, hold on.
So I just copied it and pasted it from town code onto my Word document, but I just would try to love to understand, so. There's kind of nine of these things, and I want to be able to make sure the objectives are clear from you as developers. That we try and achieve what the goal of the flexible arrangement is. So I don't know, I don't want to read them through, but I think if you can kind of like just read through and comment as you see, just to address each of the nine points.
Sure, I mean, for the first one, I mean, it does create quite a bit of flexibility, especially in design. It allows for a better looking neighborhood, it allows for. Better placement of utilities. It just gives you a lot more. I don't know, creativity within the project. Second one. I mean, obviously, you're, instead of ten percent with the conventional, you're at twenty-five percent open space. Ten percent being. Undisturbed natural. The. Third one, it definitely, instead of, again, this would go back to the sprawl, I don't know if you've. Looked at our Leeds Way project as compared to a lot of other projects. It allows for the flexibility of the houses to be closer to the neighborhood, to the street. Allows the houses to be closer together. Gives it more of a, I don't know, I have a neighborhood feel, like I live on McNeil Drive, the houses are. Much closer together, it gives more of a chance to do that. He. Gives a more diverse housing, affordability. It's. I mean, affordability, the definition of affordability is different.
Yeah, and I guess are you thinking of how to having these all just kind of market pricing? Are you looking to kind of bring in any, any sort of diverse? Or affordable housing within this six sites?
I'm not looking to do that, no.
Okay.
The scenic vistas, I will say the wetland area is actually very attractive. It's more like a meadowish type area, so that would be protected. I don't know if there are any unique or significant natural historic resources there. So. I don't know about that. It's a drastically shorter road. And I would say that would help with the maintenance of streets, utilities and public surfaces. And again. Shrinking the project. Just makes less sprawl. And then. I don't think we would be putting any passive or recreational facilities there.
And then just clarity on your termination of open space, that doesn't include any of the wetlands, correct?
That would be upland area.
Sorry, what did you say, a blended area?
Upland.
Oh, upland. Okay, I'll stop sharing that. Thank you for going through that. And then I think the, the other question was, as you looked at the, the plan, is six what you guys would, would. Rest on, or would you go lower?
If you guys did not want the flexible, I would still be moving forward with the six as conventional.
Okay. So those are all my questions for now. Thank you for, for entertaining me. Appreciate it.
Thank you for hearing us.
So, Michael. At the beginning, Karina indicated. That the two plans are a different scale. And a different orientation. Are you going to come back with? New plans that are either, that are the same scale and the same orientation?
Yes, we would. We'd be hoping to at least get some sort of ideas to the direction of the board, and then we could. Move forward with the project. And we could have the engineer amend all that.
So. As Mr. Stein. Questioned about the neighbors, you, and. You know, what comes first? Do you go see the neighbors first, or do you come see the planning board first? You decided to come. And see the planning board first, the zoning code. Requires this pre-meeting. So there's, you're, you so far have not been required to. Send out the notices for the public hearing to the neighbors. So, you know, if they're tuned in and they're watching this tonight, they're seeing what we're seeing. If they're not, they'll eventually either hear about it or get a. A notice if it moves on to a public hearing. And then anywhere in between then and now, you know, you're. We've seen your ability to reach out to, to the neighbors and eventually bring it all together. So. You're as, you're trying to get a feeling from the board tonight?
Yeah, we were trying to see, I guess it was just, we're trying to get some feedback from the board. So informational as to. Whether or not you like the flexible.
Okay. Karina, is that consistent with the requirement in the code? The informal meeting?
Yes, it is.
So. Does the board want to get more information before we. Render our initial opinion, or do we want to render our initial opinion tonight? I'm good with. Giving an opinion tonight.
Should we let Mimi chime in? Because I jumped in front of her.
Oh, okay, Mrs. Luttrell.
My apologies, I got kicked out. We're trying not to take it personally. I had a couple of. Questions. I, I had a hard time trying to read the numbers on the plan. So. Just to be clear, the conventional plan, those six units can be built with all the correct. Zoning and subdivision rules and regs and. Border health rules.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. There's, I noticed there was no stormwater shown on the conventional. And there was a lot that's used for it on the flex, but the stormwater would be able to fit in with those six lots.
Yes, it would. It would go pretty much in the same area.
Okay. Also, the, the open space. Just to be clear, it's ten percent of the entire site is natural and twenty-five percent of that entire site is. Common. So was, were those figures figured on the entire square footage of the site?
I don't know, the way we read it was twenty-five percent overall, and then ten percent of that was undisturbed, and that's the way Boulder. Also read it. So that's how we did it. I don't know, that's, I don't know, that's the way the rule read to us.
Well, we have town council opinion on it, that it's thirty-five percent of the site in total, ten natural and twenty-five.
I can have them look at it.
And then, just those, the narrow strips of open space. Have. Been found to not fulfill the intention of the pile off open space, they're unenforceable. And that's just getting. Mode, which isn't the. Which is not the intention. And also that, the very tip of that, that parcel. Abuts two pieces of larger tunnel open space. So if it couldn't connect there, that would be good.
You talking about the back area?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And I apologize again for my. Lacking technology.
Thank you. So. I'm prepared to ask the board for their opinion. I'll give mine first. I, I, I. I believe I'd be leaning toward the flexible. Plan. To the. I, I think if I had objections, I would. Say them now. So based on what I'm seeing at this point in time, I encourage you to redo the plan, same scale, same orientation. For our next meeting, if that's when you want to come back. And then we could make a more formal. A vote. To send you in the direction. One way or the other, but. At this point, very early stages and without seeing. The revised plan. And based on the comments that you heard, I'd, I'd be leaning toward the flexible. Mr. Mills?
Don, Freddie would like to speak. Quickly. Freddie, you also?
I'm, I'm being called on.
Yep.
Hi, Freddie Gillespie speaking as an individual. Sorry about that, I don't know how I was unmuted, wasn't my control. I will say that during the Halloran property assessment, we were walking back there, the appraisal. And that abuts, directly abuts this parcel, and I'm sure your neighbors are going to be very happy to have residential use instead of the logging. It was. You know, unbelievable, the assessors couldn't, the appraisers couldn't imagine how that could be going on there, so. I think there's a lot of great opportunity. I did want to raise a couple of issues, is that. I think Mimi mentioned, the point comes down to, it connects to Halloran, the Halloran property, the Hubley property. And easements from Hidden Meadow and. I forget the name of the street right now. That the Halloran property came off of. So, and there's wetlands back there, but there's real opportunity to connect. To habitat and or, even if it's just for the residents, you don't want to make it public, we, we have no say over that. But that it. Is something to look for. And. Somebody asked, I, I don't hear the answer, that the six lots. On the. Conventional, I didn't see any stormwater. Parcel, and the stormwater parcel on the flex is so big. Is, the question is, is it really a six lot subdivision? Not, you know, it's like. I don't know. That's something for somebody else to answer, but I didn't see any stormwater, and it just seems if it was needed to be put in there. For the, for the definition of lots, it gives more land available for open space. When it's a five lot flex than the six lot. And that. As always, it's a total of twenty-five percent and ten percent. Of the whole parcel. Open space. Upland for the open space, and we, planning board's been going by that for, I don't know. Many years now, after the. Input from town council and many. Reviews in the past, so that's something. The commission will look at when we review it.
So the, the stormwater, I believe, so we would still have to prove that out if we move forward with the flex development, I believe, so. I know it looks different because it's on a different scale, but that stormwater would fit there. And then to answer, go back to the other question, I do believe a large portion of our open space is. Abutting that area, so it is fairly protected. I will say though, when you're looking at this property on paper, it looks vastly different than when you look at it in person, because. It was a logging facility, most of the trees are gone. So. What you're protecting on paper and what you're protecting there. I think are kind of two different things. But that. Area does abut a lot of the open space that we have.
Just saying to take a look at that, because when we get the full plans and the open space commission reviews them, that's something we look at and will recommend. Because I think on the current flex plan, the open space surrounds the storm, the stormwater. Which isn't really. You know. As you read and what the intent of the flex plan is, it's not to protect the stormwater detention basin. So, just, just some opportunities there. Thank you.
Anything else? I gave my opinion, I'll call on Mr. Mills.
So not, not to belabor the point, I'd just be in favor, I'm aligned with you, Mr. Chairman. So I, nothing else to add.
Mr. Stein?
I'm certainly generally in favor of the flex plan. Given the choice and appreciate the insights and comments of our Open Space Commission.
Mrs. Luttrell?
Also generally in favor of the.
And Mrs. Hulian?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the flexible versus conventional.
So that's as much as you're going to get from us tonight, Michael?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Sounds good to us. Okay.
Don, do you want him to come back to another meeting with the, with these conceptuals?
Yeah, because I think what we usually do is, we, we take a vote, I mean, if the, if the conceptual plan has enough detail. Then the board would take a vote. To support the moving ahead with the flexible plan. You don't want the developer to, you know, spend a lot of money on a flex plan, get three quarters of the way down the road. And have a problem. And then just go back to the conventional plan. So. And sometimes, you know, we don't agree, and the developer will proceed at his own risk to try to get the flex plan. Approved, or the, the conventional plan approved. But. I think. Based on what we discussed tonight. Would like to continue this so-called informal. Meeting so that we can have. The plans. Same scale, same orientation. Know what we're looking at, and. perhaps Michael will, um, take into account the comments regarding the open space and, um, make some adjustments. Does that answer your question, Karina? You're gonna come back, Michael, next time? September?
Uh, what's the date?
September 14.
Uh.
About a month.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Okay. Anything else? I just had one more thing. There was a picture of a, like a young boy. Would that be, would that be the next generation of Bartolines that we would, what we'll be?
Uh, not if my wife has.
Okay. All right.
That would be probably the fourth generation. Yep.
Yeah, yeah. Grandfather, father, you guys. The next, the next guy.
He's already very into the bulldozer, so I don't know.
Okay.
He's adorable.
Thank you.
All right. We'll see you next time. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is, um, open space monitoring report. Karina?
Okay. Just pull this one up quickly. So the, um, planning department in conjunction with the planning board, hired Lucas Environmental to prepare fiscal year 20 open space monitoring inspections, uh, monitoring reports which reflect, um, site visits to four properties. Stonebrook Village, Woodland Estates, Vicry Hill Estates, and Grasslands 2 on Orchard Road. And this evening, we asked, um, Joe Orzel with Lucas and Environmental, who's in the attendees, if he could be upgraded to, um, panelist. Who's going to give a brief presentation on his, uh, final report. And we'll let him take it from there. Joe, he has to be unmuted. There you go. Hi, Joe.
Hi, how are you?
But there you are. Hi.
Welcome back, Joe. Well, thank you. As, uh, Karina mentioned, um, we were, uh, asked to do the, uh, monitoring inspections on four sites this year. Uh, Stonebrook Village, Woodland Estates, Vicry Hill Estates, and Grasslands 2. This is, um, very similar format, uh, the report, uh, to the one we used last year. We made a couple of, uh, changes at the suggestion of, uh, Karina and Freddie Gillespie. In addition, uh, was, uh, section number seven, which is action items. And we also added, uh, a small, uh, checkbox under the, uh, encroachment, uh, section of the report to, uh, include, uh, erosion controls where those have encroached, uh, into an open space. As with last year, uh, we use the, uh, D research database, which was very valuable. And, uh, made, uh, obtaining a lot of the deed information, uh, quick and easy. And we recommend that, uh, if we did last year, that the, uh, reports be, uh, included in, in the, uh, the database. I think what I, what we did last year, I think when we were face to face, is I kind of, uh, paged through the report, with the members and just kind of pointed out some of the highlights, uh, that I recall from the, uh, the site inspections. I think I could do that. If they shared my screen, I could probably, um, scroll through and just, uh, mention, uh, some of the items from each site, uh, as I go through. I don't want to dwell too much. I know you still have, uh, several things on your agenda. But, uh, if I thought if I did that and then, uh, answer any questions at the end, that might work unless the commission or the, uh, board has, uh, different ideas.
John, you're muted.
It worked well last year when you did it. So I, I like the, I like the way you do it, unless the board has any objection, let's do that. You're on, Joe.
All right. I just have to find my share on this one. Here we go. All right. Is that screen sharing?
Yes.
Okay. As I mentioned, uh, the first site was Stonebrook Village, uh, located at Stonebrook Court. This is a, uh, a new subdivision. A couple of the things that were, um, memorable about this site visit, uh, number one, there were, um, Freddie, um, accompanying me on the sidewalk, uh, and was able to provide a wealth of knowledge. Uh, this particular site was not in the, uh, database, so it was good having Freddie, uh, there. The, uh, boundaries of the site were very well marked. Granted, it was a very, uh, recent development. But the use, uh, of the, uh, the iron rods with the caps, um, spaced every, uh, 20 or 30 feet, uh, made it very easy to know exactly where you were in relation to the open space. In contrast to some of the other sites, which we'll get to. In general, the open space is in good shape. There, uh, is not a lot of invasive species. Uh, there is some invasive species. In this section, um, let me see if I can, right along here, behind the houses, where the numbers one and two, the photos are. And then, uh, some along, uh, the edges in this area. But in general, uh, not much invasive species, uh, within the, uh, open space. There are a couple of encroachments, which I think there are pictures of, or apparent encro- encroachments, I should say. Here's one of the, the, uh, the boundary markers. Here's a wooden stake, and you can, looking down on the, on the rebar with the cap, and the cap had OS marked on it. Here, you can see another one of those markers, but it's up on the stone wall. This is the open space to the right. So this appears to be a stone wall and a fence which encroached into the open space area. Uh, and here is another, another one here. Uh, as far as some of my notes, um, as I mentioned, the permanent markers have been installed and were very useful. Minimal disturbance, uh, in the OS areas, except for those couple of landscape areas. And there is also in this one, uh, some, uh, sediment barriers and erosion controls, which, uh, remained, uh, partially buried both the, uh, hay bales and the silt fence, uh, within the edge of the open space areas. Uh, invasive vegetation is, uh, in most places minimal, but there are a few spots where I pointed out where it's fairly, uh, significant. There were some locations where Winterberry Holly was to be planted. And we looked at those in the field and, uh, made some recommendations on, on where those could go. Let's see.
I had Joe add to his notes in this section. Whenever there were, um, a list of conditions, I just want to point out that, um, I asked them to add, even if, and it's in summary format, the conditions out of the special, out of the permits approvals, so that we could have a quick reference here. This one just happened to have so many because it was Stonebrook Village, and there were an extensive number of conditions there. So there's a couple pages just reiterating the specific open space related conditions. So Joe added those. I just wanted to point that out.
Right. That was one of the other changes. We, we kind of expanded this section to, uh, to include those conditions that, uh, related to the open space. Now just scroll through those. Here's the other new section that was added as far as, uh, for action items. And for this location, we have, uh, verified that the deeds include the restrictions. Upon completion of the project, make sure that the erosion controls are removed from the open space areas. Uh, make sure that all the rebar markers are installed. I believe there was only one that I recall not being able to find. I, I think they were, uh, pretty much all there. And confirm, uh, the condo documents, uh, master deed include the exhibit A language, uh, from the decision.
So those, um, action items are a culmination of mine and Freddie's. And then any, if there were suggestions from Lucas, just so that we have something to start tracking them, uh, you know, in one list. So I asked them to add this section.
I think it'd be a good reference, you know, if, if down the road, this, uh, location gets visited again, and you can see what's been acted on and, and if the action items have been, have been followed. The second site is Woodland Estates, uh, Kitter Lane. This area has, uh, three open space parcels, um, town owned. Access is through, uh, a trail to, uh, parcel C and parcel A. And there's a parking area right on Kitter Lane, uh, in this area, um, for access to parcel B. Uh, in general, uh, parcels, uh, A and C were in, in very good shape. Pretty minimal encroachment, um, invasive species were not significant. Generally, some small patches along the edges, but pretty good in, in the interior. Uh, parcel B, however, did have, uh, this whole front corner, uh, has been landscaped, which appeared to be an encroachment, but, um, that may need to be looked into. There's some photographs here. Uh, you can see typical photograph of the, uh, interior portion, uh, of the open space. Some yard clippings, yard waste, um, dumped into the edge of the open space. Same thing here. This is a typical parcel B. And here are some of the pictures of the, uh, encroachments on parcel B. This is a huge mound of grass clippings. Apparently, they've just been, uh, dumping their grass clippings from the moat area up on, up on this hill. Here it is, looking out toward, uh, Kitter Lane. And here it is from across Woodland Ave, the whole front of the, uh, parcel is landscaped. And this is the backside of the, uh, that, that view looking the other direction, at the landscaping that occurred. Uh, I did note that there were, there was a letter that, um, access, um, was to have been provided from Kitter Lane to the common open space. I was not able to find that. It doesn't mean it's not there. It just may not be marked, uh, sufficiently to know where it is. Here's a list of the, uh, conditions again, that deed with the open space. Action items, verify that the entrance, at, at parcel B, um, verify whether those are encroachments on the open space parcel. And if so, uh, mitigate. And also there was a, a section of fence behind number 10 Kitter Lane, which, uh, when I was walking through the site, didn't seem to follow the lot line. It may or may not be encroaching. It just depends on where the fence was in, in relation to the actual lot line, which I couldn't tell for sure. Karina, do you have any, any comments on, on that site that you wanted to throw in at this point?
No, that was pretty clear.
All right. Third site is Vicry Hill Estates, Vicry Hill Lane. Uh, this is one of the sites that, um, is a good argument for using some kind of bound markers, um, to mark the, uh, open space, um, perimeter. This location right here is pretty easy to find. It's, you just walk this driveway to the end of the property line, which is marked. And there's a little parking pull off right here. However, from there on, um, it's west of it. It's all wooded, um, heavily wooded. There are no, uh, stone walls located conveniently to let you know where you are. Um, so there's a lot of kind of going up. This, this is a steep hill. This is the top of the hill up here. There's kind of a lot of going up and down the slope of the hill, trying to judge your distance from the, uh, the house on top of the hill, going around, uh, the entire perimeter. When you get in this area, it was easier because there is a stone wall located here. So it was fairly easy to locate once in this location here. Another, uh, argument to be made here is if, here's a 10 foot wide access easement that comes out here. If these are intended to provide, um, pedestrian access of some kind to the open space, both here and here, those need to be marked in some way. And they should be, it should be considered to allow some kind of, um, invasive species management in those areas. The densest areas of invasions on this, uh, property were right here at the entrance. And this stretch right in here, which was pretty much impassable. It was so thick with the honeysuckle. So if the intent is to allow some kind of, uh, pedestrian access, uh, into those, then some kind of, of management should be, um, considered on those areas and some kind of marking to make them easier. Cause they just, just kind of popped out of the woods at this end, uh, without any, any knowing. If I had been approaching it from the other direction, it would have been very difficult to find. You can see the, uh, parking area I mentioned, um, right here, and the, uh, this steepness of the slope. Uh, with some storm damage, some, some large trees, some large blowdowns that look fairly recent on this site. As in one of the, uh, other sites, which I'll mention. Here's, um, Oriental Bittersweet right at the entrance. This is a possible encroachment. Right just beyond these small pines, um, the trees have been cleared. But again, it's difficult to know exactly where the property line is there. It just kind of eyeballing things that look like it might, uh, be up into the open space. Uh, typical yard waste along the edges. Uh, and this is the, uh, the 10 foot wide, uh, access, which is, like I said, pretty much impenetrable. Action item is to determine where the town owned parcel, uh, parcel I exists, either through the easements, uh, or the access and utility easement. Or from a former Curtis property. Or from a former Curtis property. Anything to add on that one?
No, that's good. It is tough to determine if there aren't markers.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, I mean, moving forward, like I said, the, the markers at Stonebrook were great. If, if all the sites had, had markings like that, that would make it much easier. The last of the sites was Grasslands too. This is primarily, or a good portion, this is wetland, forested wetland. This edge over here is upland. Difficulty again on this site is access. I wasn't sure if there was supposed to be access into this easement, this utility easement. I could not see any access into that way. There is access here. Again, extremely overgrown with invasive vegetation to the point where you're probably not going to get through it without a machete. I had to actually walk around onto the back of this property to, to get around the invasions on here. Once you get into the interior, it's, it's very nice forested wetland. The northern edge here and then through here. And this path here is, is where the invasions are concentrated and they are very heavy in that section. In this area, very few invasions. There's a potential vernal pool, a map potential vernal pool right in this area. And if I was a betting person, I would, I would bet that that is in fact a certifiable vernal pool. It looks like it had all the right ingredients to be, function as vernal pool habitat. One of the other access difficulties on this site is, is where to park. If you want to get in, this is a, a very narrow windy road with very narrow shoulders. I was able to find a spot squeezing on the shoulder. But I wouldn't recommend anyone actually park there. This, this site also had some significant storm damage, some large trees blown down. Here's a photo of the potential vernal pool, part of it. It actually expands out at the back of the photo. There were some stone walls along most of the property bounds on this, on this site. So it did make it easier to find my location. Except in one spot, which I will point out. When we get to the next map, as you can see, there's some thick honeysuckle. This is along the northern property line in Bittersweet. That's pretty typical along the northern property line. And again, clumps of the yard tree clippings and, and, and grass clippings that are along the edges of the developed properties. This portion right here was, was difficult to locate on. There again, it looked like there might've been a couple of stone walls in this location. And which one was actually the, the property line wasn't real clear. And when I got to this spot right here, the, the wooded area and what appeared to be the, the open space slot that I was walking on just sort of disappeared into landscape yards. So this, this area right in here might need to be looked at a little more closely. To see if that's been encroached upon by, by landscaping. But again, it was a little bit tough in this area to know exactly where I was located, but it was certainly in this general location. As I mentioned, access is, is a big issue at this open space parcel. Due to limited parking and the heavy invasive vegetation trying to get in. I also recommended that the commission or the board may want to consider investigating having the, the vernal pool certified. The Conservation Commission could, could certainly look into that. And one action item regarding lot seven, deeding the lot seven to the current custody of the Conservation Commission. Overall recommendations. The town had recommended, as I had mentioned, that the form be amended by adding section seven, which we did. And by adding a checkbox for the erosion control materials encroaching into the open space, which was also done. We, we continue to recommend, as we did last year, that moving forward, boundary markers be required to mark the bounds of the open space to make them easier to find in, in the field. We also would recommend that going forward, the project scope might be expanded to include recommendations for methods to notify property owners in the butters regarding encroachments and prohibited impacts, possibly some kind of a brochure or, or email notification program to people who, who order on open space. With regard to the future open space, we continue to recommend requiring sufficient female markers, as I had mentioned. Also would recommend that when, when plans are submitted, that all the stone walls within the open space are indicated in some way. Just makes navigating those areas much clearer. And as I had mentioned before, would recommend that some form of invasive management, invasive species management will be considered. Especially in these areas that aren't meant to be access ways for pedestrians to get in and out of the open space. And I think that in a nutshell, is it, certainly happy to answer any questions that you have.
Very good. Very good, Joe. I'll open it up to the board. Mr. Mills, questions, comments, compliments?
No, I would say a great job again. Appreciate you blocking the properties and creating these reports. It's, um, it's great to hear that. You know, we as a town are monitoring the properties and it doesn't seem like, you know, we didn't find any oil dumpings or unknown farm dumps or anything like that, which is always a good thing. It seemed like we had a very typical, correct me if I'm wrong, typical invasive species and some lawn clippings and whatnot dumped. But, um, you know, I, I would be in favor too of at least being able to have some type of notification to homeowners that this is happening and what can be done to help protect the open space going forward. And, um, you know, I think, you know, that falls on us for how we're going to do that to empower you more for the next round. But thank you very much.
Mr. Stein.
Oh yeah, no, I, I agree with what Mr. Mills said and appreciate the hard work being done here and feel it's important work and support the, the efforts. Thank you.
Mrs. Luttrell.
Yes, thank you very much. It was a, a great report. And I think it's a very good bet that that is the vernal pool. I walked the property before the town took it. There were wood frogs in there. So that's a pretty good sign that it is a vernal pool. And I, I think that it would be a good idea to send out some kind of a, a global informational letter or email for people who have bought open space on not dropping my own properties and how they could be good stewards to the open space. But thank you very much. Great job.
Mrs. Houlihan.
Yeah, thank, thank you so much, Joe. Appreciate it. In reviewing this and I think Freddie's on the line too. Freddie had made some comments around kind of the, that you have the recommendations of kind of the follow-up actions. And there are some comments made throughout around kind of if the planning board had a role. So I would just try to understand like what is, and maybe this is a question to Don, like what is the role? Obviously we receive these reports, but as follow-up to ensure that, is that, does that again fall on building inspector or how does it, for compliance?
We've had this discussion for several years. We had a discussion with the Conservation Commission. And their response back was that their, their job is under Wetlands Protection Act. So if there's open space that's upland, it's not them. Conservation is not not interested or not concerned or not going to put any effort into inspecting upland, which they felt was out of their jurisdiction. We had the discussion with the building inspector, the code enforcement officer. And the feedback from that was don't have the resources, don't have to, to not have the people, time, or the expertise to go into these natural areas, whereas the building inspector and the code enforcement piece of that mostly has to do with structures and utilities. So that went nowhere. And then going back to the planning board, what's, what's our piece to this? Well, for, for the last several years, we pay for these inspections out of our budget. And we also, the planning board members don't necessarily have the expertise to perform these inspections. Now, as far as the follow-up, which would be, which would include contacting the butters or some of those other actions. Oh, and we've also asked Open Space Commission to perform that, those tasks. And the feedback has been that they don't have the resources and they don't have a budget. So we, I believe the planning board has certainly done a, a good piece of this by funding this. And, and having this on our agenda. And being aware of these situations so that we can continue some type of a program. But again, it seems to be an area that, in my humble opinion, would, if there were five members on the Open Space Commission, that the majority of these follow-up actions could be performed by them. They have more expertise than the planning board of the planning department. But it's not, we don't have the authority to make that happen. Did I answer your question?
To talk.
What's that?
Freddie has her hand raised to talk?
I want to ask Marnie if I answered your question.
Um, no, because I think that like it's, I think there's, yeah, you've answered it in the sense that no one's willing to take this step. But I feel like open space needs muscle behind it to kind of enforce to say, if there are some follow-up action items, can the planning board take a role, a more assertive role in a letter to the, the, the building inspector? Because it's clearly identified, you know, is it something that can, you can kind of write to the people who are the developers or continue to maintain the land? I, I don't know. I just feel like it falls short of being a really good project. Like I think, you know, what Joe's done and, and Freddie and walking through has clearly delineated where people are not doing what we've asked them to do. And I just think there has to be some sort of enforcement. And I understand I heard you, but it's just unsatisfactory to me.
Yeah, I think we all feel that way. And when, I remember when we had the discussion with the building inspector. And that carried over into a discussion with the selectman and the selectman. You know, the building inspector made it crystal clear. He doesn't have the expertise and he doesn't have the time. Just, it's just not enough. It's a, it's a one-person office when it, when it comes to doing these inspections. And and if he, if, if the selectman instruct the building inspector to do it, the building inspector is going to push back and say, give me more people to do it. And give me some training, because I don't know what I'm looking at. And again, when we had that discussion, the selectmen, I think were in a position where they were unwilling to fund an additional person to do this or portion of a person. And it just kind of resulted in no action. And of course, everyone is somewhat comfortable in letting us do what we're doing. But there's a limit to what we can do also. Is Freddie's hand still up?
Yes, it is.
Hi, I unmuted myself. I didn't know I had that capacity. So I apologize again. So I'm Freddie Gillespie and the Open Space Preservation Commission did meet as a commission and we went through this report in detail. And I also had prior knowledge because for the most part, the Open Space Preservation Commission walked many of these properties before the town took them. And first I'd like to say appreciation for the planning board in having Lucas and engineering do these, this survey. Joe has done an amazing job. And I have to be clear that we have been instructed more than once by the selectmen that we are neither inspectors nor enforcers. And we are not allowed to do a lot of the types of things that would be required to have anything come of this. So, you know, whether we had five members and we had all the time in the world, you know, we have been strongly, strongly advised. I don't know how to say it more strongly than that. So the next thing is that what we have here is two, two situations, I think. One, the planning board is doing a great job documenting, maybe some, you know, letter or something could come out of it. But this land is set aside forever, right? It's a permanent, for the most part, protected open space land. And hopefully in the future, a better process will come about. Where there's a program in place, you know, that can manage this land, who should have ownership of it? Like it's sort of a little bit in limbo. And I think most towns, when they get town-owned parcels, so that's the other issue. Some of this is easements on private property, which is very different than a town-owned parcel. Most towns that have town-owned open space from a subdivision set aside, whether it's, whether it is uplands or wetlands, it is under the care and control of the Conservation Commission, which has Article 97 protection. And it is also no matter what the historical knowledge of a current board is, his conservation commissions were originally set up to be open space commissions before the Wetlands Protection Act came. So who knows in the future if that will change and some of this land will get under their care and control where they can have oversight and have a program in place for all of the open space and conservation in town. But that's not happening today, but what you have done here is done a great job documenting and creating a roadmap. I did have a couple of comments on I did have a couple of comments on several of the parcels. One is the Kitter Lane. That encroachment on the open space, it's within the confines of where the open space was set aside. It is a heavily landscaped, I could not find anything in the decision that allowed them to have that. We're not saying, or commission did not say what should be done about it, because again, we're not inspectors or enforcers. But it is, open space is either a park or it's natural open space. And this is neither of those. And the fact that the landscaping is non-native, the heavy mulching, it just totally prohibits any kind of wildlife habitat or natural benefit. And there's a spotlight that's on all night long. And at the very least, that should be out. The mulch should be gone so that insects have access to the dirt. The plantings, if you want to have a formal planting, it should be turned over to native plants and not non-natives. There's something that could be done without directly, you know, tearing out what's there and making it look as nice. The other issue was there was a stone dust path required, and that was built. It connected the parking spaces to the town forest. However, that was never, public access was not deeded across the private property. So when an Eagle Scout tried to make a trail from there, he was not allowed. That could be maybe revisited with a new property owner. But I think some of the message here is what not to do on your next open space. So when you're looking at the next flex plan that has 35% open space, you don't want to do the same areas of small little strips that begs encroachment, that has no public value as common land. Also, when you look at the, I think it was the Mount Vickery one? I know when we were looking at, looking at that before town meeting, we did not have permission to access it. I'm not sure how Joe got up there, but I don't think there's town-owned land that has frontage on a road. So that must be on an easement on private property, and I could be mistaken. But no, it's another clue. If you're getting land, a parcel for the town to own, there should be some way for the townspeople to access it, to use it, or to at least inspect it or to view it.
Freddie, in that case, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I could be mixing it up. But I thought there was some kind of a utility or drainage easement over there of some sort.
Utility and drainage easements don't necessarily allow public access and as an
No, no, I mean for the inspection, for the monitoring.
It's a town-owned parcel. The town people own it, and they can't get to it. I'm just saying, that's something to look at when you have future parcels. How do, if it's going to be a town-owned parcel, and if not, if it's easements on private property, how do you ensure it's not encroached upon the way these ones always tend to, I shouldn't say always, most of them seem to be. But aside from that, I did want to say, good job. Joe did a great job. And thank you to the planning board. And any other comments on Stone Brook would be just addressed on Stone Brook, I think.
And Freddie, I appreciate all your help along the way, helping pick the locations, helping with your comments. It's a big help to have the ability to work together on these.
Well, thank you. I will say, we spent hours going through the report. So it wasn't like we just, it's not like we're just saying, oh, we're not involved. It's like we're as involved as we, we can be, and we have a lot of other projects we're working on as well.
Good, and I think we were able to incorporate a lot of your comments into the, a lot of the Open Space Preservation Commission's comments into the final report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
My dog has.
Is Joe still there?
Still here.
We all set to let Joe go?
Yes, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
My pleasure.
I appreciate the extra effort you put in, too. I know that I asked you for a little bit of out-scope work, and you guys graciously provided that. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next agenda item then, which is a discussion item, EDC Village Mixed Use District, V-Mud, bylaw status.
Dawn, there's the Stone Brook Village Open Space Sightwalk that
Oh, I skipped that. I'm sorry.
Freddie Gillespie had asked to be on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I missed that. That's the next one. Stone Brook Village Open Space Sightwalk.
Freddie, Freddie had asked to be on the, sorry, Mimi.
Um, I have to recuse myself from this discussion as I'm in the butter, and I don't know how to do that on Zoom, like it's demoted to a participant, or do I just leave the room?
I can demote you to a participant for a little while.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, asked to be on the agenda to discuss the open space conditions in the permits for Stone Brook Village. So if you can allow Freddie to speak again, she probably has something she has to say, wants to say.
Yes. I found a mute, so I unmuted myself. Thank you. So Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, we did, the Open Space Commission, I did walk the property with Joe. But prior to that, we went through every single condition in the stormwater, I think it was lid, stormwater, and the subdivision. And we made comments on it. And then we did it again after the walk and reviewed my notes and the, the comments from Joe in the survey. And it seems that there's a bond here. And our point in reviewing it, it's an open space bond. And, you know, we don't want to be in any way holding up the project and the release of that bond. And we are required in the decision for noting where the 20 sparkle berry shrubs are to be placed. And it specifically called out that we took a sightwalk with the developer to determine where they went. And this was in the midst of the shutdown of the coronavirus, and, you know, that wasn't going to happen. And then eventually, I did go out with Joe, wearing masks and trying to stay socially distant. But the issue we came up with is that in the open spaces, a lot, most of the invasives are on the edges of the property. And what's not clear, if you look at the big parcel of open space where all of the land is that's not, has the invasives, is it's the interior wetlands, which wasn't really the required open space for the subdivision. It, that just sort of wetlands went with it. I don't know if you understand what that means. But it wasn't, you know, there was a percentage that's required, and then it's mostly, it was the 20-foot no-touch. And that's where most of the invasives are, and that's the best spot for the native plants to be planted. And the decision requires no invasives that they need to be removed. And because they're in the wetland buffer, they need to go in front of the Conservation Commission to get permission to do that removal before you can do the planting. When this first came up, we also had asked, and they were agreeable, the requirement was for sparkle berry, which is a cultivar of winter berry. And cultivars aren't as good, they tend to be, the berries are too big for the birds to even eat. Putting them on the edges gives more visual attraction for the abutters to, and, you know, to witness the, the beauty of the, the birds and the berries and all of that. So it just, and some of the sites were what Joe picked out, because we asked if he could help with that. So that was our main point, that the invasives need to be removed and the bushes then planted. You don't want to plant the bushes before you remove the invasives, because it's likely to use herbicide, and that would potentially kill the plants you're putting in. We also asked that they be in groups of five with one male in each grouping, because that's how you get the berries. And our conversations with Capital Group was fine on that. And the rest of the things, we sent a note. I can write it up again if, I don't know if you got that, but mostly it's, has this been done? There's a lot of things in the requirements for the open space in that project, that the New Homeowners Association was supposed to be set up, and the deeds had certain things before an occupancy permit. And all of those things are required before the bond, I think, can be released.
Freddie, that document was provided to the planning board members.
Okay, so they have it, so I don't need to go over the items. It was our, our review and recommendations to help move this forward, so that Capital Group was not held up in getting their, you know, the, the, their bond released. And we, it was just, we were very careful that we didn't want to be telling the planning board what to do. It was just a recommendation, what should be done to help move this forward. Aside from the sparkle berries.
Okay, and we have this document, so when comes time to revisit the bond, we'll provide this to Justin O'Neill as well, and, you know, we'll figure out which ones have to be on.
When I, when I asked that we'd be on the agenda, I wasn't sure. I thought Capital Group might be here tonight. So I don't know if it's appropriate for me to write as chair where we think the sparkle berry shrubs should go. That's what the decision said. I've never seen such a thing, and I don't recall putting that condition in, but it was a hectic time back then. It was, you know, it was hectic, I'll just say that. And for us to decide where landscaping plants went, I, I don't know if it was an add-on after the fact. I really had, I was really kind of surprised when Billy called me and asked me where I wanted them. So
Well, they were invited, but I don't think they were available. But we'll continue to coordinate with you and me and the developer.
Yeah, I just want to make sure they're kept in the loop, that we're not, you know, missing their needs at all.
No, we try to keep them up to speed on what we're doing.
Okay, so thank you. That's it.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. Move on to the next item. I think is the EDC Village Mixed Use District, V-Mud, bylaw status. Rena.
Yes, okay. Sorry, trying to pull it out here. I'm in a room. We received an email from John Wood at the beginning of the meeting that he had an urgent matter that he needed to attend to. So he was going to be here to speak to kind of the progress. But he did indicate in his email that the consultant who has been hired, Judy Barrett, is looking to create a focus group with members of the planning board and the Board of Selectmen to discuss this, this particular, like, action item. So.
Yeah, so I know that in previous meeting, John Wood, who attended, asked for feedback on version three, and I believe it's that version three, right? Sarah, that's being looked at by Judy Barrett.
Yes.
Sarah and I and the EDC coordinator, Marika Julie Connolly, and Claire Reynolds had a Zoom meeting, I believe it was the 28th of July or something like that. Yeah, July 28th, to introduce Judy Barrett and, you know, give her information that we could help her with to get her up to speed. So last, also, we heard she was going to get back to us as well. Sounds like Sarah, she, she did that. So there were no comments back at this point, probably because planning board members knew that a different document will be coming to review at some point, something that's more updated. So there is, I don't think we have anything else on that, right, Sarah?
Uh, no, like I said, you know, John, John Wood's email reads that Judy, Judy is happy to organize and host the meeting for the focus group on her Zoom account, because she may want to ask some polling questions. So just wondering, I guess, if anyone or who from this board might be interested in participating in a focus group with Judy and the Board of Selectmen and the EDC.
Is this at one of the regular Board of Selectmen's meetings or EDC meeting? Or is this independent of all that?
I don't have any additional context. At my, my read of this email, the inference is that it would be a separate meeting, a small focus group meeting, not in conjunction with any type of formal meeting. But I would have to get additional clarity on that, because again, I'm just reading John's email from earlier this evening.
Okay, so we'll probably have to find out more.
Sure.
Dawn, do you think it's warrants asking if one of the planning board members would potentially be interested in attending this probably relatively brief focus group meeting? Or should we hold off until we get more information?
No, one of my concerns is that we say we'll participate, and we're the only ones. Now, you've got one of the selectmen, one of the five selectmen who was on the four-and-a-half-year revision, draft revision of the zoning code. Sam, Sam was on there. And so he has tremendous amount of experience with the code, with proposed changes. And I was on there. I won't say the same about myself, but it may be that it's appropriate to have someone like Sam from the selectman's office, or someone like me from the planning board, because of our work on the ZAC, zoning advisory committee. Four-and-a-half years, 85 meetings, something like that. Or it may be more appropriate for fresh horses. And not have Sam and not have me on it. Because Judy, Judy, she guided the ZAC for a long time. She was our consultant. So I'm, I, I'm just curious that if, if we propose a volunteer or a voluntold, then nobody else will do it. And it, and it, it's not what the EDC wants. They want members from these different boards there.
I also want to point out that after Sarah and I met with Judy Barrett and the EDC folks in the Zoom meeting, Sarah provided Judy Barrett with a list of video links to the planning board meetings from the beginning of when we started talking about this. I think it was the end of 2017, maybe 18, so that she could view the conversations on the videotapes directly to get an understanding of, you know, the planning board's feedback to the EDC and that, you know, they prepare this bylaw language that they are, you know, working on and very interested in doing. So we did provide, you know, data, and when, when they ask, we do respond and provide any kind of information, including having this recent Zoom meeting at the end of July, trying to give them what we know of it from fresh faces. So, you know, they do have access to information. When they ask us, we contact the planning board members either individually or at a meeting like this to get feedback and provide it. So just food for thought.
Do you, it's getting late, so maybe I'm not thinking right, but can anyone think of a, another board, commission that has like a subcommittee or what, similar to what the EDC is asking, that includes planning board, someone from the Board of Selectmen, et cetera? I can't.
I believe Shopsey requires a member of the Board of Selectmen and a board member, if I'm not mistaken.
That's right. It's in the charge. Yes.
Okay.
Shopsey does. But they're, they are on the committee. Right? That's what you're referring to. They're on the committee. That's how it was voted in to be established.
No, it just seems different to have a, a commission request help in this forum to pull in members of other boards to help them do what they're supposed to do. Maybe it's Maybe it's. Great idea. I don't know, but.
Well, I guess in one respect, how's it that much different than the master plank committee?
Going to answer the same question.
But those are um and maybe it's the same. But those are full time members. Whereas this is considered a.
Niche initiative?
Well, it's it's like a subcommittee to help the EDC do their job, I guess.
Well.
Yeah, we have suggested, I think, at one of the prior meetings that perhaps an EDC member attend these planning board meetings in order to get feedback directly. I know it's tough because, you know, they all it's volunteer work and all. And but, you know, it's always open for somebody to. Pop in at these meetings towards the end of the agenda. It would be helpful if they could come and ask their questions here. When everyone's together to get a general consent, because even if you send one planning board member, it doesn't really truly represent the whole board in the consensus, because that member is going to be. Providing their opinion versus. A consensus or, you know. Majority feel for what direction they might be going in. I could be wrong, but. Just my opinion.
I guess I'll ask the board. Do we want to um agree to provide a person? At this time or? Get more information.
Sarah, is it just one meeting or is this supposed to be a continuous set of series of meetings?
Um, again, the the email reads um. She is wondering if we could schedule a focus group on Zoom with one or two people from the planning board, select board. Economic Development Committee and a few other. Leaders so we can pose some questions and try to frame an approach that people can support.
Let's get more detail on what what we're being asked to participate in and then we'll we'll launch on it.
Sounds good.
Okay. Anything more on this? Next item on the agenda is the Warren article sponsor fall special town meeting. Karina.
Okay, we got an email from Mark Purple asking if um the planning board would be on board with pushing. The two articles and, you know, considering also the third article from the zoning. Board of Appeals for their changes to the annual town meeting in the spring of twenty twenty one. Time is short. There's, I believe, this discussion of um. You know, getting to a fall town meeting and still being in the state of emergency. Restricting, you know, um, public meetings and such. So. I told Mark that I would bring that this up. At this planning board meeting and get an answer from the planning board if they were on board with pushing. The outdoor illumination opposed by law changes, the site plan review changes for getting rid of the. Site minor site plan review committee and going to the plane would and then, you know, feedback on the zoning boards changes for their miscellaneous um. Nonconforming. By law language. So that's the question. Is the planning board amiable to pushing these three two? And opinion on the third to to the spring next year as opposed to the fall this year also saves costs for the town.
I'll open up to the board, Mr. Mills.
Um, I I don't see a pressing need to gather everyone and put them at risk just for these items. So I would be in favor of going to a regular time meeting.
Mr. Stein.
Yeah, same here. I don't see a need for a special time meeting.
This is Latrell.
Hi, Kooker.
Mrs. Holian.
Agree with my fellow board members.
As do I, so it's five to zero. Back to Mark Purple.
Will do. We'll send him the email tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Next item is the planner's report.
Okay. Do this quickly.
Karina, in addition to in addition to the items that we went over. There's one item that I I. I want to add to it, add to your planner's report. You and I had talked about it before, but it's not in your. Your notes. So go ahead first.
Want me to start?
Yeah.
Okay, um. So we're going to jump to Dearfoot Road because I do see some participants in the. In the attendees list who are here to hear what's going on. So Dearfoot Road. Where we did the A and R plan a couple of years ago for the Peter Dowd lots. And the planning board endorsed approval not required for. Six new lots and one remaining lot on the existing house property. So and during the development, um, the residents had concerns about some of the drainage things that are happening there and. You know, there's been discussions and back and forth. So the residents had a drainage report prepared by a consultant they hired. And then the developer Brendan Properties had a the report reviewed by Bowler Engineering. To um. You know, discuss what the initial report from the residents had. So in going back and forth. Denise Eddie and Margaret Landry on different occasions, but both for the same intent have asked to be placed on a planning board agenda. To discuss these drainage issues. I believe they came before the planning board during. Prior concern with a a tree that had been removed. And this is when we still had in person meetings. And at the time. The planning board had indicated to them that some of these issues with the drainage were not under planning board jurisdiction. So. Before I went ahead and just put it on the agenda, I wanted to confirm, you know, kind of administrative question. Does the planning board? Would they like to put this on in the upcoming agenda September fourteenth is what the residents have asked for? So that's the question. Would the planning board like to add a discussion item and then would they like to do it on September fourteenth meeting?
So Karina and I went over this and. On one hand, we shouldn't because the issues there are not under our jurisdiction. But on the other hand, there are neighbors have asked to be on the agenda. And if it's if it helps to explain to the neighbors. The developer. And the rest of the townspeople. To explain what the problem is and also to and and propose solutions. And also to keep ourselves informed in case something. New comes up that is in our jurisdiction and we can take action. So I don't have a problem with them being on the September fourteenth agenda, although uh tonight's agenda. Is loaded a lot of. Time spent tonight, and I don't want to. I want to make sure that the September fourteenth agenda. Is something that's manageable and can uh. Have adequate time for each item without taking us into the fourth or fifth hour. We're in a fourth hour now.
Right, I apologize. It's it's a really full schedule. We're trying to keep it short, but there's tremendous amount. It would it it could likely be um. You know. Less, but there's no guarantee, but we always check the agenda with you. So if you need something pushed, we could always.
Andrew.
I I agree, Dawn, like if it's going to help out our our quote neighbors, I mean, we're we're here to help serve the citizens of the town. And if they're coming to us for guidance on what to do, even though it might not be in our jurisdiction, we can explain. You know, our our role in the overall. The overall planning process for that development and then who who to go with now. I'd be in favor of of going through that without getting into other people's or other. Groups. Jurisdiction.
Jesse.
So this sounds to me, if I'm not staying on, like it's a deficiency with a a structure inside. Which would fall under the jurisdiction of the Chief Zoning Enforcement Officer, which is under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen. So my recommendation would be to refer this matter to the Board of Selectmen for their review.
Karina, is that consistent or inconsistent with what the the neighbors requested?
Um, I believe that the residents who requested to be on the planning board agenda have also requested to be on the Board of Selectmen's agenda. Who are taking it up in their first meeting in September and also um. Conservation Commission will be um discussing this at their August twentieth. Meeting, if I believe that's the date. So Conservation and Board of Selectmen have it on their agenda as well per request of the residents.
Well, we set the agenda. Right up to it could be right up to forty eight hours before the meeting, so. If uh if we wanted to add them to the agenda or take them off, we have time right up until close to September fourteen.
Right, so both the Commission Conservation and Board of Selectmen should have met by then if the schedule, if the anticipated schedule holds.
Okay, Mrs. Latrell.
Um, the developer had requested the department head meeting. Is that going to happen or has it happened?
It did happen last week. I attended um Conservation Agent attended Mark Purple. Karen Galligan. A representative of Bowler and Brendan Giblin and one of Brendan Properties. Site managers attended at the request of Brendan Giblin to meet with department heads to. Explain the report and why he had the report and general status of the projects and his intentions for the. The work that's still happening now and in the near future. So yes, the answer is yes. Sorry.
But no one representing the neighborhood was there.
Uh, no, it was department head meeting. It was um. No, it was at the request of Brendan Properties and he asked three three entity. He asked me. And DPW and Conservation and we said, okay, we'll meet with you. You want to tell us what's going on, but no.
Um. So. I agree with um. With Mr. Morris, I it's not really within our jurisdiction, but if. We can be of any help or any support, I'd be happy to um discuss it at a planning board meeting, but I don't know what. I would my suggestion was going to be to have someone from the neighborhood. If that's already happened, I guess that's not going to. Help. But if it helps the neighbors, I'd be happy to, but I don't know what the planning.
Thank you. Marnie.
Um, yeah, I'm I do think so. So prior to me being an elected official, I think this is the frustration with town people. It's like everyone says it's not their jurisdiction. So. I do think that we need to be, you know, represented, representing the people who've elected us and to see how. We might be able to forge that ahead. Mimi's suggestion of having a department head and. The resident should probably be at one of those meetings. Like I just, I fundamentally don't understand how our town works. And how people are supposed to get resolution to problems like this. So I'm in full support of having them have a a voice at our meeting.
Very good. So if. If after the conservation people discuss it, discuss it and the selectmen discuss it. And. Karina hears from or reaches out to the neighbors and said, you guys still want to come to the planning board meeting? You know, if it's all resolved, if if they're happy, then we won't put them on the agenda, but you, we have all given ourselves the green light. To have them on the agenda if they want.
Excellent.
Next item, Karina.
Okay, um. The next item. All right. So quick updates. The housing production plan update has been submitted to the DHCD by Community Opportunities Group and we're awaiting. A review of that document and then hopefully we'll be all set with that. As you know, the EDC. Hired Judy Barrett with Barrett Planning consultant in order to help with the B mud. The flagpole. At the Board of Selectmen's meeting, I believe they indicated that the flagpole is supposed to be returned to the original. Condition prior to the structural and antenna changes that were made. The EDC received a COVID nineteen grant award for local and small businesses for two hundred and four thousand dollars so that small businesses could. Get grant money to help them through any issues they have. If you want more information, contact the EDC on that. Ballfield lighting projects are slated to be submitted to the planning department to be on the September fourteenth. Two thousand twenty planning board meeting for opening of public hearings. They'll need to submit. Within a week or so, about a week from now in order to make that deadline for public notification.
But when they submit, when they submit.
Yes.
I mean, that those projects have a a history. When they submit, if the application isn't complete.
Right, then they'll get a memo saying the deficiencies and then if they are deficient, then unless they respond to those deficiencies. By a certain deadline before we have to notify the newspaper, then it will get pushed to another meeting.
Okay.
A a future meeting. It depends on when we file the application and we'll file it with the town clerk once it's complete. And then that starts the the clock and everything in motion.
Okay.
Uh, one eighteen, one twenty turnpike. As you recall, there's a six point two acre parcel in the back that was going to be land gifted to conservation in a conservation restriction. The property owner is Curo Enterprises has notified me and Conservation that they are selling. The property one eighteen, one twenty to um. Somebody else and. That closing will happen August twenty first. The they did commence work in the courtyard area between the buildings, which was part of the project. So we'll have to wait and see what happens if they decide to. How they decide to move. On the project that was permitted for the parking garage there. If you have any questions, you can just call me at the planning office and I can. Answer questions on that. There was a question regarding scenic road tree removal that Mimi had posed status of that back in January, the planning board had asked me. Planning Department to provide a to give a letter to the Board of Selectmen, asking for them to designate or select member to meet with a planning board member. To review the scenic road tree removal process and what's happening with that. They have assigned Sam Sam Stivers. And are waiting for the planning board to let me know who they want to. Attend this meeting with a Board of Selectmen meeting, a person rep and a planning board meeting and probably Karen Galligan with the DPW, maybe the tree warden. To talk about. maybe the tree warden, uh, to talk about, um, tree removal. So if the planning board has someone who'd like to volunteer to, I could let the Board of Selectmen know that we could set up a meeting with Sam Stivers and uh, a planning board member.
I brought it up, so I'd be happy to.
I didn't get that, Mimi, what, what was that?
It said I brought it up, so I'd be happy to. And, um, just for clarification, not just scenic roads, also the Tree City, which, um, involves, uh, chapter eighty on public shade trees.
Yes, I should rephrase that. Public shade trees is the topic and what happens with those and, you know, whose jurisdiction and, uh, there are a couple of prior, um, legal opinions from two thousand sixteen and other information that I culminated if anyone, has any question on those. So, um, Mimi, you'll be the one?
Unless someone else wants to arm wrestle.
Thank you for volunteering. Uh, I don't know, uh, I'll bounce off of this. They, they, uh, closed a section of, uh, Flag Road, uh, a week or so ago. Uh, I saw the police car down there because it's right down the street from my house and I asked what was going on and they said that, uh, they were removing a tree, uh, a, at the end of Flag Road. And it was in a narrow section and the crane, with the outriggers wouldn't fit on the road along with, uh, another car, so they, they closed that section of the road. And I don't usually go that way because it's, it's life threatening to, to, uh, go out on, uh, from Flag Road onto Route nine. So I didn't. And I ran into, uh, Selectmen Stivers at the transfer station. And he asked me if I knew about it and I, I knew about it, but I didn't know which tree or trees that they, they took down. And as it turns out, it's this massive, probably two hundred year old oak, uh, on the north side of Flag Road. And he inquired, he indicated to me that he, he had inquired as to how that happened. And the stories don't add up. So, uh, I think the selectmen are going to look into that. But that is a classic example of what we're trying to avoid, which is a living, uh, street tree that comes down without any kind of notification or hearing. Anything else, Karina?
Right, and part of that discussion is also going to be, you know, what the utility companies are required to do based on Mass General law. Because there is a section.
Yeah, Sam indicated that that was a, a player too of the utilities, right?
Yeah, so, um, we'll hash that out and report back. And the last thing is, um, Park Central at the Conservation Commission meeting on July thirtieth. I believe that they've come to a stop, um, Conservation Commission required changes on the plans. And I believe the developer indicated that they were not going to make the changes. So it's being reverted back to Mast EP under the Mast EP appeal process, which had required it to go back to Conservation. So I'll keep you posted on, um, how that moves forward.
Actually, uh, you had sent us an email in July reminding us of that, the beginning of the continued public hearing and it, it had been on hold for months and months. And I attended that. And you're right, Karina, they, the developer said that they're not going to provide any more information. The plan is what it is. There's no more information to, to be provided. And they wanted the commission to vote. And I believe the chairman said, no, uh, it was within his authority to not require a vote on, uh, July thirtieth, but to continue the hearing, uh, to their next meeting in order to give the public, uh, a better and more opportunity to comment. And one of the, uh, the areas of disagreement is that the Southborough, uh, wetlands regulations don't apply because the whole site is considered a forty B. And that's been a matter of disagreement since the very beginning in two thousand fourteen, fifteen and sixteen, right up until, uh, when the, uh, the forty B special permit was granted by the, by the ZBA. So what I would like to do, uh, if, because the chairman asked for additional, uh, time or required additional time for the public to, uh, comment, I would like to, uh, prepare a letter to send to the Conservation Commission, reinforcing that position, um, that the planning board had, uh, during that earlier timeframe and I believe still has. And, uh, and try, try to, uh, help the, help the Conservation Commission or at least let them know that the planning board does not agree with the consultant relative to the waiving of the wetlands regulations, the Southborough Wetland Regulations beyond the forty B units and the, uh, sewage treatment facility. The market rate units has always been considered by the planning board as, uh, subject to site plan and subject to, uh, many of the code regulations that were, um, considered to be waived or, or not applicable. So with the board's permission, um, I'll work with Karina and get a letter to, uh, Conservation Commission before August twentieth.
I'd be in favor of that. Absolutely.
Yes, awesome.
I suspect I'd have to recuse myself from, um, offering a vote.
So what, we'll work on that.
We do have an attendee with their hand up.
Okay.
I believe that's related to Deerfoot.
Okay, she's had her hand up for a while, so I don't know if we want to let her talk or?
Oh, I just, yes, definitely, but I just want to finish up with this item.
Sure.
So we've, we, um, we discussed this, uh, it's been part of the planner's report. We've discussed this now in this public meeting. The board has given, uh, its opinion to allow the chairman and the town planner to craft a letter that the general, uh, theme of it I just described. So I'll, I'll just ask the board if the, and I forget how, how this, um, is considered, but I was always, at, at one point I was under the impression that a draft, uh, was administrative and was not a public document. And then I thought at some point, they said, no, even if it's a draft, it's a public document. So if town planner and I draft a letter and we send it to each of the board members for your, uh, input, is that a, a violation of, uh, public documents or public meeting rules? Opinion?
I'm not sure.
We wouldn't be deliberating, but if, if there was something in the letter that a, a member thought was either an error or a, um, s- something that was not true and brought that and, and asked to have that changed. Because it's a draft, I don't.
Similar to meeting minutes? We send the meeting minutes out for review and sometimes, um, planning board members, we ask them, you know, but individually you respond and say, you know, strike that line or?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's similar to that. Or with reports, sometimes we send a draft report out and say, you know, please review this if you see any errors individually, let us know your comments and then we culminate all the changes and present it at a planning board meeting. I'm not sure.
Mimi, you, you're usually the, the public records police.
So, so we, um, just all agreed by consensus to what you said, regarding Park Central in the market rate units, um, not being part of the forty B. I would think if a, a letter was crafted in, was said that pretty much on those lines within the four corners of what was said at this meeting and what was voted on by consensus, if there's any little wordsmithing done, but does not change, um,
What the intent?
Yeah, the intent, what was, what was, uh, agreed upon at this meeting that that would not be a, uh, a violation. That would be a lot.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, that's, that's the way we'll move out on that then. Thank you. Next item, we all said, uh, Karina on planner's report?
I know, there's one more thing, um, but I know that, um, it, I believe that's Margaret Landry.
All right, yep. Go ahead, Sarah.
Yep, she's all set.
Okay, hi, can you hear me, Sarah?
Yep.
Good, loud and clear. Um, I, I'll make this very quick because it's late and I'm speaking for, um, all of our neighbors on the street. And as I listened, Dawn, to what you were saying about the issues with like the trees being removed and the wetland violations that came up earlier and the, um, the, the, um, site plans versus the as-built plans. We've had, we are like a, a, a microcosm of all of these issues. And as, as far as I can tell, there's a, there's a profound, there's a profound enforcement weakness somehow built into the way the town boards are functioning, um, where things can happen and it, and it becomes sort of, well, um, you'll have to talk to so-and-so, you'll have to talk to so-and-so. And we've been, um, trying for, for more than two years to, uh, try and, and just have a, um, a reasonable hearing on this. And, um, so we'd really appreciate it if you could listen to us. And I don't think it's a question of it's the planning board's bellywick or Conservation's bellywick or the building department's bellywick. But it's, it's everybody's problem. And it seems to me when it, when it gets divided between boards, a tree gets cut down and nothing can be done. Um, you know, wetlands are poured into and somehow nothing can be done. So I think in a way it would be very instructive for the overall, uh, way that the, the town is constituted at this point to look at the problems that Deerfoot's been having, because we've sort of been having all of them. And it, it might be instructive, um, uh, moving forward for Southborough to think about other, uh, uh, other means of checks and balances on, um, on neighborhood preservation and tree preservation. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thanks, Marguerite. Um, yes, Dawn, I failed to give you this information earlier and you may know it, but, um, Vanessa Hale sent out a message this morning that, um, said to share the news of the death of John Morrow, father of, of, uh, both retired Chief Moros and husband, a longtime DPW admin, Connie Morrow. Um, you must have known them, so, um, the email says, uh, Johnny was a call firefighter for five decades and the head's groundkeeper at Saint Marks for fifty-eight years, among his many other local contributions. So condolences.
I didn't, I, I didn't know that, but I knew Johnny for, oh, oh, you know, since I was a kid. And, um, my youngest brother actually worked, uh, for John at Saint Marks at the, at the golf course. Yeah.
My apologies to not get to that to you sooner, but I, I wanted to make sure that you knew and the planning board was privy to that.
He only made one of him.
Yeah, that's something.
Approval of meeting minutes is next.
That's it. Meeting minutes for July thirteenth, two thousand twenty.
I make a motion that the planning board.
Make motion to approve meetings of July thirteen.
You both motioned.
Mr. Mills had asked me earlier to make the motion, so I apologize for stepping on his toes. I second his motion.
I'm back from driving.
You got that, Kate? Andrew made the motion. Jesse, second. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Andy? Roll call?
We're at that point in the meeting where Morris said, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yeah?
Lihan, yes?
It's after eleven o'clock, so we're getting punchy. Motion's been made and seconded and, uh, all in favor, yes? Those are, are approved. The next meeting is September fourteenth, subject to change. Uh, if there's anything else? Mr. Mills?
I'll let Jesse do it.
I'd like to make, to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Latrell, yeah?
Lihan, yes?
Thank you, Kate. Thanks, Sarah.